All right, let's call this meeting the Breilhuis Provincial School Committee of Order. This meeting will be recorded and your image will be made in broadcast. Please stand up, pledge of allegiance.
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, earth, liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. Anyone here for public comments? All right. Uh, can I have the motion, please, to approve the consent agenda?
Second?
Please, second?
Second.
Just seconds, okay. Anybody have any questions? All right, I'm on favor of the consent agenda.
Okay.
And anyone who has? Okay, that morning passes. Uh, next up, so my report, again, I don't really have much to report on, just a thank you to the community. Uh, both town meetings, uh, passed and supported the school budget, so thank you to the voters and everyone who made that possible. Uh, especially want to thank Al and Aaron and the rest of your team. I mean, I don't know where we would have been, uh, after last year, but everyone seemed to love having you guys here to sort of clean things up and get things going. You built a curable team, a central office, so everybody up there is doing a great job. Even the people who had some negative things to say, well, some of the people who had some negative things to say at the Berlantown meeting were saying your praises as well, so I think maybe I need to be a little bit public on that, actually, but I don't know. But it was overall pretty good, so thanks to everyone there on that. Next on the list is our superintendent surgeon update, but I don't think Tracy's here just yet, so if you must put that on hold. Uh, so Al, what do you think?
Yes, so thanks for so many, so, uh, break back at this conversation that you just said, like, we also want to thank school committee, right, in both towns of Brooklyn, Boston, and the communities as well, too, uh, for the budget process and helping us out through that as well, too. Um, we couldn't be more grateful for the support that the families gave us. We sent a message out to thanking them as well, too, for the help and supporting the budget, passing it in first time. So, thank you, school committee, thank you as well. Um, so taking things a little out of order, and I'm gonna turn it over to Joe directly, uh, our intro director of technology, uh, as well. So, one of the things that, um, I was hired as, as the interim superintendent of schools was really looking at, um, at a lens of looking and finding things that we need to get this district in place, so that we go to have a full superintendent in board, we have things in place and ready to go. Yet again, um, last night, which brought to our attention another thing from previous that we uncovered and that we're gonna share a little bit with you, underneath the agenda item, um, that we already have on there where it says, "For interim director of technology, Joe Spazada will talk about student firewall security issues." So, I'm gonna turn it over to Joe. There was something that was brought to our attention late last night, I wanna say about 11 o'clock last night, uh, and within a couple hours, we were able to address and take care of it. I'm gonna have Joe talk a little bit about it now. I apologize in front of you, talking back and forth with Joe and just giving you a little update of what, um, we uncovered, um, that previously was in our district, that we need to make sure technology-wise that we, we put a, a close on that. So, I'm gonna just turn it over to Joe.
Thank you. Uh, first, I just want to say thank you to the parent that made us aware of this situation. It's communications like that that helped make this district a little stronger, especially when it comes to the safety and security of everyone within the district. So, as Superintendent Ganem was saying, about 11 o'clock last night, we were made aware of a potential, um, well, it wasn't potential, there was an exposure of sensitive material where a student gained access to sensitive material, um, written by administration within the district, shared with faculty and staff. The student then took that, took that information and shared it with a few other students. Once we were made aware of this, uh, we immediately addressed the situation. We locked down the pathway that was taken from when this original, um, institution of this communication was put in place. We locked down that backdoor pathway, um, which locked out all students from, in pretty much, it, I'm sorry, it locked down everyone from gaining access to it that wasn't supposed to have access to it. Not just students, but faculty and staff as well. We closed all additional pathways that could potentially lead towards people gaining access to sensitive material. Please let it be known that this material wasn't available to people outside of the school district. It was only for people, the, the pathway was only open for people within the district, within our, uh, organization. So, it wasn't exposure to the immediate public, but for that people within the district. We closed all those pathways down and, um, everything was locked out. By the end of the night, um, and then this morning, we went, we took a deeper dive and continued to lock down our district and make it safer and more secure for our faculty, staff, and students.
So, just a little, I'm gonna put it in layman's terms, a little bit, the way, the way I understand it, working with Joe, getting followed 11 o'clock by 1 o'clock this morning, we had everything locked down and set. Um, we met early this morning with the administration from, from town to along with Joe, myself, and the technology team to see what was taking place and how students gained access. Kids are incredibly, um, in terms of technology, have an incredible way of, of, of going around some things. But let me just be really clear, they, we weren't able to get into individual emails, right? So, there is that piece that was protected. But what happens if, if people created, um, working groups through Google? If the four, I'm gonna, gonna give examples, that's the elementary education, I mean, if the four was gonna kind of Google Doc and start communicating with each other, we want to make sure that it's, it's almost like Facebook public and Facebook private. And what should have been happening is those, when those were set up, those, those groupings, they should have been private. They should have been that people didn't have, able to access and get into that. Nothing was inappropriate that was in there, and, and we obviously credit all of our, our teachers and administration, no, no inappropriate things, but they were able to get into conversations that appropriate teachers shouldn't have about sixth grade students or about particular things taking place. This student's gonna be absent for the week or whatever happens that they, if, for six grade teacher, teachers were exchanging with each other. A lot of things they could access to might have been at Wilson Elementary School, where they were able to access that. There was gonna be pizza day today, or there was going to be an event taking place there, because those weren't locked out. If those groups were created in the past and were checked off that, they could, people didn't have access to them. A lot of times, there might have been 30 and 35 people in that room chat, and then someone else tried to join in. People didn't realize that person was joining in there as well, too. It's sort of mimicking what's happening in, in, and that happened in our country as well, too. But there, we, we immediately found out, shut down, locked down, and we went through 147, by the way, is the amount of individuals broken off groups that were created in our community. Again, amongst teachers, amongst teachers and their, and their students, it could have been any type of group that they were having conversations on Google with. Um, we locked them all down, Joe's going through each individual of the 147 and making sure they have to either get permission to join that group or that we don't even have access to that whatsoever. There were students responsible that got into this information, um, respectfully, because this student, I can't share information, but we, we've been having conversations with those parents and with the administration of, of Tahuana as well, too. We will be issuing the letter that's going out either later on tonight, um, or first thing tomorrow. And we have vetted that and vetted that and made our attorneys aware of that as well, too, so we know, they know what's taking place, yeah. Again, things that we're still uncovering, right, and we're still trying to, we're trying to fix and make sure that we have the highest performing district. And, and again, to Joe's point, we appreciate the people letting us know as soon as they find out about this. And I'm sorry to say, I'm sure other people might have known about this taking place as well, too, but didn't tell us. It's all of our responsibilities as parents, school committee members, teachers, and receiving stuff like this. Technology-wise, you gotta let us know so we can make those necessary changes and adjustments. I, I really put that layman's terms, Joe, but I want to make sure people understood that. Any questions on that at all? School committee?
Thanks for acting upon it quickly.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, 11, 11:03.
Bed, don't sleep.
Yeah, 11:03, texted Joe at 11:04, and it kind of checked out by a little before 1:00 AM this morning. We had that shut down, so, so, we got work to do on our end, um, but to use the expression, students were able to get in the back door. We left a little bit of a back door open in our district, and we were able to shut that down, and now we're, we, we know that that's taking place. But 147 individual groupings that are out there, we're working on all those right now to make sure that will not happen again.
I would just, uh, can I just ask, is there any plans for like the summer about just like going through the whole Google Classroom ecosystem and making sure, like, double check? I know it's, it's in the middle of the year, you can't really, like, tear it apart, but...
Yes, um, we, we've actually started, as we're going through these individual groups, um, where, where slowly, some of these changes are gonna affect district-wide. For instance, we're, we're taking a look at emails in and out of the district. If they're by students, should that be allowed? Should, uh, Google Chat be available to students? All, all sorts of different measures that we're starting to look at to, to know if whether they should be utilized or not. We're able to go in and look and see if the kids are using it, um, see if faculty and staff are using it. So, we're, we're taking a deeper dive at that, um, and everything, every item that we look at, we're gonna make a positive change towards safety and security for our students.
The other part is we, we need to do some professional, and what our staff in, in Berlantown, right? So, when they're setting up these Google Chats that I'm gonna get a group of us working together and working on a document or having an exchange about a student absence or whatever it happens to be, that we know that we're making that a private document and that's not a public document as well, too. So, we need to do some work on that and as our, as an admin team and with our staff and faculty at Wilson.
Any other questions?
Again, communication either today or tomorrow, we're just making the final changes to that, get that out, um, as a community. And again, our attorneys have been being aware, so this way, definitely making sure we're doing things right and protecting our district as well.
Do you want to continue with security, or do you want to come back to it later in order?
Uh, I'm good with that, I just want to make sure that information was out, because we're trying to get that letter out and we want to make sure you guys knew about this before the letter got out to parents, and you're getting that letter at the same time as parents and school committee members and saying, "What's going on with this album?" Having to follow up really nicely underneath, um, the agenda right now for tonight, if that's okay.
All right. Uh, so there's no more part of yours to report. Joe, you want to add a little?
Uh, not necessarily on this, but on anything.
Sure, if you want me to continue, we, we have summer projects lined up, um, changing out the firewalls at the three schools, upgrading that, um, adding, going through the Google admin console and sharing up additional measures for safety and security in there. Updating the access points to improve Wi-Fi capabilities throughout the buildings. In addition, we are, um, we've been talking about how we're going to, um, completely take control of the safety and security and the protocols for all of our students, and how do we do that? How do we take more ownership? Whether we go to a true one-to-one school district and we eliminate our students from being able to bring in their own devices? What a plan like that, if, if that's the decision that we're gonna go, how does that plan look? Um, you know, we, I know that our families are buying devices for our students to bring in MacBooks, Chromebooks, Windows-based computers that they're, they're allowing, and we're allowing them to do that. But what that does is that leaves us open for additional, um, safety and security issues by not having complete autonomous control of the device. So, the students have additional ways, um, for instance, if a student brings in a MacBook, they can very easily open up iMessage and text with their friends in the middle of the day. It looks like they're working off their device. If we, if we own our devices, we can look into programs such as, um, Harper or Harper or, or GoGuardian, um, at our elementary schools or even across the entire district, which will allow our teachers to actually visually see at any given moment in their class what the kids are on. Obviously, programs like that come with additional expenses, but, um, we're trying to figure out what is the best direction for the district to go in, to take control, I don't want to say take control, but to provide, um, our students and our families with the highest level of support and security features that we can.
And I know that's something we're gonna probably talk about in the subcommittee you guys have, but yeah, I gotta, I gotta tell you though, we try and meet him, and while we're moving forward in that direction, we're gonna have to definitely survey parents, because a lot of parents have invested in computers, invested in technology for that as well, too. But the best way and the only way for us to be able to completely control the security of technology is when we have those devices. We, you know, we can control what's going in and out of those devices. But that's a conversation we're gonna have to really get input from parents on.
So, Al, this may be a question better for the principals, but what is the school policy? How do teachers, I don't want to say behave, because that's not the right word, but how do they operate in the classroom? The kids got a device, whether it's their own device or a school's device, and they're on a type of way, teach things like, like Joe just said, "Oh, they're probably just doing their work." What is the procedure? Do you even have set time for them to be on a device working? If a kid just randomly opens a device, says, "Oh, I'm taking my notes on my laptop," is that allowed, not allowed? What are you doing right now? Because the same thing with the cell phone policy, we can write all the policies we want, but if they're not being enforced in the classroom, what's the point? So, so what is the procedure again?
Um, so right now, there's a variety of, um, you know, depending, the six through 12, that's a wide range of grade levels. And so, most of the information that I received and as I walk around, um, most, most teachers are allowing students to use their Chromebooks, um, for a small part of a lesson. Most of the ti, uh, maybe I would say four out of the five days. Some teachers are, don't rely on it at all, and maybe it's once a week for 15 minutes. So, it's, it varies depending on the content area and the type of work that's being done. All teachers are walking around, when students are on their, like, devices, all teachers are walking around to make sure, and to make sure that they're, they have the work that's been assigned, um, if they're doing an iXL for math or a Delta Math, or if they're on HHMI doing some type of exploration. Because there are some very, you know, good quality materials to be accessed out there, but they're walking around. If there's a paraprofessional in the room, they're having that paraprofessional, um, walking around as well. They, there are some teachers who would like, I, I think there's different, uh, you know, protocols put in place at the elementary school. I think, you know, even at the middle school, I think maybe like a GoGuardian, um, people would appreciate that. The people who use it more, you know, use the Chromebooks more often in the classroom. But there are some classrooms that don't rely on it, so it really would have to be on it, and, like, you know, who would use this particular technology? I know that English teachers right now, for all, um, moving, you know, historically, it's been a great tool, a tool, particularly when collaborating, you could collaborate on a Google Doc. Now, we, we're becoming more cautious with authentic writing. And so, we want to make sure that students are collaborating, collaborating in an authentic way and not having AI disrupt that process. So, some of the high school teachers are having them put the Chromebooks away and doing things more of a pencil and pen traditional way.
Yeah, yeah, good, no, good, sorry. I mean, I'm a fan of using the technology in a class, it's a tool, they're gonna have to use it to get the real thing.
Right.
Absolutely, but I'm sure some kids are, are better than others at the alt-tab shortcuts, the hide thing, and you can't around.
Absolutely.
So, are we doing any sort of training, professional development for teachers on how, like, signs to look for, what to spot? How to make sure that, you know what I'm gonna say, probably, how to make sure a kid's son is informed on LinkedIn, create a profile, send it to a message during the day, like, would, you know, how are we handling that?
Yeah.
I can talk about the elementary.
You want to do the elementary, then I'll answer that question.
Yeah, that's why I left you a question, I know it's a little different at this level, um, and I'm just looking, Joe had asked for some information about how often they're using it, what they're using it for, we're still collecting that data, and it, it depends on the grade. So, for instance, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, right now, it's 20 minutes weekly on handwriting, handwriting without tears, that, and there is a lot of assistance there with those, with those kids. First grade, it's, you know, they're, they're watching, these kids are learning how to do it. First grade is, they have Chromebooks and they have iPads, not one-to-one, they're working on that as well, but, um, they have those things. They're being taught how to use this. Second grade is like an hour per day, uh, research, typing. I don't have any information on third grade yet. Fourth grade is an hour per day, doing things like Savis, Practice Bunny, the math, um, Wagle, Rocket Math, walking around doing this. Fifth grade is 6.25 hours weekly on research reports, things like that. There are some filler games in that we've cut back on, um, to do more rigor. But I will say that, uh, one of the things that's helped is Bark. So, I just went on just to see that I had eight alerts from just the last couple of days. One of the things that we found out about this is the kids didn't know about Bark, but we kind of let them know, uh, we have...
Changes everything, doesn't it?
It certainly does, because they're, they're being kids, they're, they're calling each other, you know, silly little names, and my school site or my adjustment counselor, myself, have access to this, we go through, we go and say, "Hey, did you know? We can see what you're doing on your school computer." And that's not okay, that's not kind. So, they're real, it's really cut back on, we get a lot of alerts about that stuff, but the teachers are going through, the parents are going through. We have had some things like that, um, LinkedIn, and I'm gonna tell you, that was fixed within 15 minutes. All we do is reach out to Joe and David, boom, it's done. These kids are smart, they're tech savvy, more so than I ever was at their age, um, we didn't have all this technology. I know there's been, um, another classroom where, um, I had to speak to someone just because there was something set up and kids were going on the games, that might not have been appropriate. Um, we address that when it happens to have your eyes on, you should be circulating, because technology is great when it's used properly. But these kids can get into things, um, that is just amazing to me. I had to bring something to Kyle about they, they could open up other accounts, I don't know if he, he was researching. I don't know if he brought it to you, but they could go into another account to open another account, and I'm just like, "What? What do you mean, what are they doing this for?" So, we're, we're keeping an eye on them, and it's just circulating and just have an eyes on.
Do they being made aware through, like, a privacy policy or something, that this is not your device?
There's a...
Anything you do is...
It's in the handbook.
...be there as the, have you seen, but...
We sign it at the beginning of the year, so it's not important.
So, so that's the thing, right, so I'm going through this right now, with globally, 28,000 people. And yes, you can make them sign it, you can make them stand up and shout it, that they read it and they understand it, and then they'll go and do it and say they didn't understand it. So, more than just a signature on a million forms to get at the beginning of the year, and it goes for staff, too.
Yeah. So, so one of the things, so, so what Cindy was just going through, so Joe sent out certain information to all of our principals, so I know Cindy's grabbed it, I know John's still working, I know Lisa's still working on, get, surveying our teachers, saying, "How much screen time do our kids have? What, what are they looking at?" So, we can stop looking at that. You know, even the conversation we had today at the high school, um, one of the things that we're able to refer back to is, just as a reminder, mom and dad, your kid signed this, and you signed this, and they're held accountable, and that's one of the things we're, we're teaching. But even like I said earlier, say, we, we need to be constantly working with our teachers on the professional learning aspect of this, because to the point that Cindy said, "These kids are smart," right? Even the way that they were walking us through how they got through the back door today, it's, it's amazing to us the knowledge that these kids have, and for us to be able to keep up with them constantly with this as well, too. I'm reading out, I haven't sent G I P, you know, Nicole, that is, I'll send it to you, send out, about the school districts that are not using cell phones, that are not limiting this, the, the screen time, and what kids are bringing in and how they're working the way around that that's taking place in Boston, I'll share with you as well, too, bringing burn phones and bringing other devices in as well, too. It's just amazing, that's out there as well, too. So, all of these things we need to take into account, but it will be interesting, and I'm hoping for the next school committee meeting in June, we'll have the report from Lisa, from John, from Cindy, uh, about what our kids are doing for screen time and making sure that we're, we're looking at holding our teachers accountable to make sure that it's not that much time being used in the classrooms as well, too.
Is there legislation currently being talked about about require minimum or maximum screen time?
I don't know the answer to that, um, I don't.
I know, I know another state just said no, no cell phones, I think, is it New York?
I think it's, I don't know if it's state or national being proposed that is setting boundaries on screen time.
Yeah, I, I think it's in the early stages, yeah, right, but, um, I know there, locally, Massachusetts level, there's legislation being talked about for cell phones specifically, but I think there's also screen time, um, yeah.
Interestingly, so I was, for our last meeting, and I'll sum that up later, but the American Academy of Physicians, um, actually went, took a step back from saying two hours only screen time, right, that's all that we hear, that's all I counsel. But they actually took a step back and they said, really, it's the quality and who's overseeing it and not the quantity, so...
That sounds like it makes more sense, because, uh, I mean, you can't get away from it, you know, we have, every single person in this room uses the device to work. But you're gonna be on it as, as a tool, right? It's just like the graphic calculator instead of, uh, Abacus.
We, we talked about it, I'm not sure whether it was Cindy, John, and Lisa, but even keyboarding skills, like, my age, right? And maybe so, we had lessons, where you learned how to use the keyboard. We're watching some of these kids just walk around doing the MCATs, doing this, trying to, like, because they're used to this, right? And being able to go this way. I sat behind at that program we're at last night, right, um, the Nobel Laureate, there was a girl sitting in front of me, man, she was so fast on that, on that phone, but, but all with two hits, but no, no skill set could that travel on to using on keyboarding skills as well, too, so, you know...
Yeah, John tells a story about the MCATs grades being low, and they figured out, because they started, they did not do punctuation capitals.
Absolutely, keyboard, right, absolutely.
Elementary.
And, and we, we don't teach that skill as much as those keyboards, because we should be doing it on our kids as well. There's a lot of work to do in keeping up with the technology as well, too. And, and we got, uh, two full-time technology people for our entire district as well, too. And half of them are spending the time just fixing our technology devices and implementing the working experience.
Are you standing in the office there?
Yes.
Yeah, everybody else have any questions or other comments or anything? What's that?
Have you done your, oh, right.
Good, thank you.
I just looked at the list and I didn't see any bills that were related to cell phone use, but there is one for safe practices for wireless.
Yeah.
Being considered, which is cool.
All right, uh, thanks, Joe. Should we go back to, uh, Tracy? I'll just touch, Aaron, I think you were next on the list.
Sure. Okay, you have two items. Uh, first item is budget report. I'm gonna speak to just a few items, I think some of them, um, we've gone over a lot of items, um, related to this. Uh, everything seems to be trending similarly to, to last time, so I don't wanna, uh, repeat anything to death. If you look, there's definitely some ups and downs in health insurance. Our aggregate health insurance, though, uh, is about $222,000 to the good with, with $78,000 encumbered. That's about $300,000 total available. We have, uh, I believe, two more bills that should be about $150,000 each, so that seems like it's gonna come in just about on. Transportation, um, you'll notice the net is, is a little bit negative if you were to add all the numbers up, but within that is about $952,000 encumbered. There have been some challenges with special education transportation, um, and I think some of our NRT invoices are, are running a little slow, so we're gonna, uh, look at that. ASABIT right now is, um, way behind in terms of their special education transportation billing. In fact, ASABIT has filed a breach of contract with Van Poel right now, um, and is looking to get out of the contract, um, for next year, so they're putting that back out to bid, um, so that's, um, gonna be interesting.
Are collaborative or just...
That's ASABIT collaborative, yeah, ASABIT Valley collaborative, I'm sorry. They do our, they coordinate our special education transportation, um, so they're looking at a number of options, but one of them right now is, is definitely getting out of that contract and re, um, redoing it with, with much tighter specifications. So, the real challenge is, uh, the people at ASABIT are struggling to reconcile the invoices they're receiving against the actual sort of student information. There's a lot of waiting hours being charged, um, that they don't think are appropriate, things like that, so, um, you know, separate item, but, you know, we don't really have a lot of control over that, it's really, uh, but they're, they're starting to reconcile some of them. I think they're a few months behind right now, as of this point, but as of this report, they were quite many months behind, so it's, it's a bit challenging. Another item, uh, long-term subs, you know, we've talked a lot about sort of looking at those numbers. Right now, in the aggregate across the district, uh, we have about $58,000 to the good in long-term subs, which is good. Day-to-day subs are only about $9,500 to the good to get us through, you know, sort of the last couple of months of the year. But net-net, if you think about that as one big category of substitutes, we're about $67,500 to the good. That should cover the, the remainder of the year one way or the other. Day-to-day subs will go over, but long-term subs will be under, which is, that, that's the way a budget works, right? We're taking the best guesses we can, some things pan out to the positive, some things pan out. And then we, I talked about a little bit before, right now, in the aggregate, we're looking about $122,000 over in private out of district special education, uh, but we've got adequate circuit breaker to cover that. By the next report, there is that odd encumbrance, if you look at the notes, uh, on the first page, there's that odd encumbrage that I've talked about a number of times, about $2.4 million. 924 of it seems to be intended to be coming from schools. Um, nine hundred and twenty-four of it seems to be intended to be coming from school choice. Um, so that leaves us, so when you look at the five point seven million dollar balance that we have right now. That leaves us with another about one point three million of sort of encumbered funds that, um, is mystery encumbered funds, I'll probably just clear out that encumbrance. Um, before the next report, so we see where things are at the end of the year, it doesn't bother me to have some extra encumbrances in, it just. Means we're being a little more honest. I don't argue with that. Um, other than that, um. There, this report does include, one of the things we didn't realize when, when we came in and took over. Uh, earlier this year is there is a bus, um, that is dedicated to taking, uh, Boylston's vocational students. To ACABIT Valley, uh, 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 Tech, um, the Tech School. So we've been paying that out of the general fund, not knowing that that's what it was for, um, so. Boylston called us and said, hey, are, are we gonna get bills for this? Uh, so we went through and we found all of those bills, we've given them to Boylston, they're gonna be giving us, uh, a check for about forty-three thousand dollars to cover. Um, that amount, so, you know, a little bit of help on the transportation side. Uh, happy to take any questions if people have questions. Um, otherwise, feel free to email me anytime if you go through this and, and see a line item, um. You know, like, uh, health insurance you'll see is, is kind of all over the place, the reality is people move around a lot, they change plans, you know, once we make that determination more than a year in advance on health insurance. Um, you know, it, it can change a lot, but again, you, you kind of hope that typically, you're gonna be in the aggregate. Everything's gonna balance out, right, someone's gonna go off a family plan, someone's gonna go on, but they're not all gonna do it at the same school, right? So you've got some movement, a lot of movement there. Any questions, sorry, ask for questions then.
To be clear, because I know within the December report.
Yep.
Some people had some questions about why are we halfway through the year and having spent half the money, this is as of the first quarter of this year, right?
This is through, this is through the third quarter, this is through the end of March.
Third quarter of our year, yeah, first quarter of the calendar.
Yes, yes.
Yep, so it's, and that's July first through?
Yeah, now, keep in mind, um, administrators who are on a twelve-month contract. Go July one to June thirtieth, teachers go September to August. So they've been paid for seven months this year, not nine, so they're about, run about two months behind. I have looked at the spending on teacher salaries and it's just about on, it's within, um, you know, about a hundred thousand dollars, but again, we haven't tapped any school choice, we haven't.
Yeah.
Includes that, it includes that encumbrance, things like that, so I think, um, we're trending fine there.
That was a question that the Brown Bank had, was about teachers in December.
Yeah.
The answer was, well, we only paid them for two months, not six.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so this doesn't matter, alright, cool. Anybody else have any questions?
Um, yeah, so like going back to what you said about that, that, I know like there was an issue with this report and the encumbrances, so. That piece of encumbrance is for some reason it wasn't encumbering certain salaries, is that what you're talking about or?
No, so that, well, the report, ours, because we do our payroll at Harper's, we don't naturally encumber anything. Like, like in terms for salaries, which is a problem, I, we'd, we'd like to figure out how to remedy that, it's not an easy fix. Um, it either requires a lot of manual labor. Or finding a system that will allow us to encumber salaries properly. Um, what exists though is someone prior to my starting in July or August put in this random. Two point four million dollar encumbrance in the system, I have no idea, it's, it's. Dozens of different line items, like a portion of my salary, a portion of Al's salary, a portion of teachers is encumbered, so any salary encumbrances. Salary line encumbrances you see are part and parcel to that encumbrance, it's almost all salaries that are encumbered. Um, again, I said I, I don't mind having extra encumbrances in the system, because honestly, all it does is make it look like you've spent more money, which is probably where I'd wanna be, unless. You know, we were way over, before we close the year, I will certainly zero that out, because it doesn't make sense to keep beyond the end of the year, and I'll prob, I'll certainly do it before I provide the report.
Alright, so that's just, that was something that was already encumbered in there, it's a bunch of different things, salaries are not encumbered, so. In your opinion, we're in good shape, but we, it's not like we have crazy extra money?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, we're, we're trending, as, as far as I can tell, we're trending very even to where we should be with the understanding, there are some items. That are in this budget that weren't necessarily intended to be, so for example, um, like there is fun, in the budget, right, we haven't assessed it to the towns, but in the budget. There literally is still in the line for, um, the S R O. That never happened, I think was intended to come out of the budget, I think we've had that conversation, and there's a few other line items that are in there, so. Um, you know, the intent is we should be within or below budget, um, and hopefully. That intent, it appears like there was an intent to take quite a bit out of school choice, hopefully we won't have to take that much, right? I think we talked about, you know, rather than trying to commit to a number upfront. We'll get towards the end of the year and we'll see where we are and try to minimize what we take out of school choice.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. There? Okay. Other questions? Okay, uh, item two, um, is a memo from me regarding, these are actually Tohonto Student Activities Accounts, I'm sorry, I haven't. Uh, the elementary school, uh, accounts typically fall under the threshold, um, to require that much action on it, um, but. Uh, our Tohonto accounts are under a little more scrutiny, they're audited on a regular basis, things like that, I will look at. The elementary student activity accounts, but those don't change as frequently as well, so there's a little, little more, um, movement in middle and high school. So, uh, what I'm hoping to do is, I can't see anywhere that indicates that the school committee has taken. Any action in the past few years, um, regarding student activity accounts. So other than the ones, if you look at the top two that say Pending Tohonto World Explorers in Sweet and Savory. Which are clubs that the school committee already approved. Um, as well as if you go down to the second page, the bottom of the second page, you'll see Class of twenty thirty-two. I apologize if you pulled this, um, uh, earlier, it may have said, uh, twenty twenty-three, I just. Mixed the two numbers up, uh, thank you Jess for pointing that out, um, but it was intended to be twenty thirty-two, that's the incoming grade six, right? So they'll come in and they'll have a class account. Um, but not knowing when, where, or how a lot of these accounts were approved. Um, it's my preference to just have the school committee approve everything sort of in, in one fell swoop. You'll also see there is some movement, so we're eliminating some accounts, so the school committee policy. Indicates every, that any student activity accounts that ceases to be active for a period of three years. Um, should be, um, there's a process for that, um, so. With the realization that we probably have not followed that process. Um, I went through with Lisa and Patrick Minahan, who is sort of the overseer of. The student activity accounts, and we looked at accounts that really didn't have any activity in like more than five years, and said, let's. Let's scrub those and let's put those funds in appropriate areas, so you'll see some actions. So the Community Services Club hasn't had activity in, uh, between five and seven years. So we're gonna request that you remove that account and transfer the hundred and thirty dollars into the civics activity account. So the goal is to put it in the most closely related account you can find. Um, Arts and Crafts, uh, transfer that to the Industrial Arts Club. Um. We're going to the Garden Club, we're gonna look at whether there's an opportunity to do, we'd like to close it, but hold those funds for now. Um, there is the possibility, we might try to see if we're gonna move that to a more appropriate revolving account. For the teacher to use for things like plant sales and things like that to help fund classes, so we wanna look at that. Uh, the Life Skills Cafe, the goal would be to remove that and transfer the remaining balance to Unified Sports. Uh, the Global, Middle School Global Citizenship Club would be to remove and transfer two dollars and forty-four cents to the High School Model U N. Uh, Math Team, we're really just, you'll see there's freshmen in varsity, we're really just consolidating those two and moving, um. Interestingly, in the aggregate, they have a positive balance, but the varsity math team has a negative balance. So it'll just come out of that other account, if you read, also read this, the student activity accounts policy. Uh, accounts aren't supposed to have negative balances in accordance with the policy, so we're gonna try to wipe that out, clean that up. Uh, Guidance College Fair, um, we're going to, um, remove and transfer the balance to P S A T A P Test. Uh, I am also gonna look at that account as to whether that has a pretty large balance and it's not. Really, doesn't really fit the definition of a student activity account per se. Uh, in my former districts, we've had, uh, more formal revolving accounts, guidance revolving accounts. That they would use for that, so I'm gonna look into that. Uh, Library, uh, we move, remove and transfer to Miscellaneous Field Trips, Anatomy Field Trips, remove and transfer to Miscellaneous. These were sort of for one-off field trips and items that just aren't done anymore. Uh, Spirit of America Field Trip, um, move that to Miscellaneous. Uh, the Les Mis Field Trip, um, remove and transfer the four twenty-five to the French Field Trip. Um, that seemed to make sense. Uh, Computer Field Trip would be removed and transferred to, uh, the Industrial Arts Club. Alexis's Field Trips, um, that would be removed and transferred to Miscellaneous Field Trips. Um, you'll also notice in your policy. That, um, graduating classes, when classes graduate, um, they should do something with those funds within two years. Um, really, the, at the end of the day, um, student activities accounts are student activities accounts, the minute that students graduate, they're no longer our students, they really should take that money almost immediately, is what the state would recommend. Uh, but we went, we went with policy and wanna give a little bit of a window to some of the more recent classes, but there is. Uh, Class of two thousand eight, two thousand fourteen, and two thousand twenty-one that we really feel like. We should just close and move to, um, undesignated funds in accordance with the policy. There will be, um, an effort to reach out to the other classes that have graduated. And a renewed effort to speak with, um, those classes, the newly graduating classes in advance of their graduation. Uh, things I've seen done frequently is the graduating class will take whatever funds are left over and transfer that. Uh, do a formal transfer to the incoming class, so they might give that to, uh, the incoming sixth grade class. Or they might do something on behalf of the school, donate it to the school for a statue, a bench, something like that, so. Um, some options, um, so adding the grade six, um, math calculators, again, not really, this isn't really, didn't really feel like it. Hey, it fits the, the, um, definition of a student activity account, um, additionally, it hasn't been used, so we'd move that to the math team. Uh, Invisible Child Fundraiser, we'd move that to the Civic Activities Club. Ooh, so those are the moves, um, as well as sort of, um. Approving all of those accounts just to make sure we get them all approved and in. Uh, the second action is, I have no idea what the school committee has approved at any point in time. In regards to the total balance of that Student Activities Agency account, so we have one big bank account. Right now, it has about a hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars in it. Um, what we'd like to do is have the school committee authorize a maximum cash balance of a hundred and fifty thousand. That way, if, if additional money goes in, um, again, we're hoping to move some of this out into more appropriate venues. Um, at which point we might take that down, but at least for now, we'd like to, um. Put that in and make sure we have some wiggle room to work with. So, uh, you'll see below, I have a recommended action, uh, in two parts. Any questions?
Um, so like, the class of two hundred and, uh, two thousand and eight and the class of two, twenty fourteen, I understand moving those, but I feel. Like the class of twenty twenty-one maybe should also be reached out to.
Okay.
I don't know what other people feel, but I just feel like that was a odd time of our history.
A lot of times, these class reunions in previous districts, they, they, I'm sorry, the class money, they put two of their own, they move it, and then they use it for their reunions, like the fifth year reunion, the tenth year reunion. So there's options, we just need, they, they just need to let us know, we shouldn't be hanging on to their money, right, and figuring it out, like, and also managing that, our treasury needs to look at all that stuff as well too.
What's the policy say on the years again?
Uh, two.
Two years.
So I'm, I'm hap, it, it's, you know, it's your policy, you guys can kind of override it, I think we've. Tried to be a little extra generous on some of the time, because we're not sure some of the proper things have happened. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to hold off on that, my recommended, I would change my recommendation slightly. If the committee, I don't, I don't think we need a vote, but if the committee. Generally feels like that, I don't know by a show of hands or something, I'd be happy to just amend this to that, so that whenever you make a motion. It would be inclusive of my change. Is that something? It's, yeah, I mean, it, it, it really just amounts to another two hundred and fifty dollars sitting in that account. Um, you know, if we were doing it each year, um, you know, the auditor would give that as a, you know, a concern, but.
I think it's fine, I think that if you reach out to the twenty twenty-one, that person still exists, I think possibly two thousand eight, your person might not even be in this area, but twenty twenty-one, hopefully the person is.
They're approaching their spy area and they might be very, it's just, yeah.
Yeah, I just, you know, that's funny, they raised, I don't know.
Right, they're probably still in college, probably still.
Pancakes they served, I don't know.
Yep, I, I think that's fine.
Okay, I, I will make that amendment then, so my, consider my memo amended.
Why don't we, uh, vote on it as is and if something's amended?
Okay.
And you've got a trouble before you do an actual vote.
Okay.
Um, I just have a quick question, so you've got this hundred and something thousand dollars in the student activity account, and I get they're all designated for these things. Um, well, I think you have an undesigned account in here, right?
Yes, there is.
Alright, so I guess my question is, you know, we're looking at putting in more parking at Tohonto, um. We're looking at fixing soccer fields, which certainly affects student life.
Yep.
So I'm wondering, uh, would the committee be able to allow, you know, using some of these funds, a hundred and something thousand dollars, seems like a, I may be way off.
School committee cannot direct this money, this is stu, this is student-owned money, the school committee cannot direct how this money is spent.
Managing it for the students.
This is, this is owned, this money is owned by the students.
Right, back to Justice's point, they, they, they did bake sales, they did pancakes, they did, this, this is not our money.
You have classes, prom.
Yeah, so if.
But where's the majority, a hundred and something thousand?
If the French, if the French club would like to donate to a parking lot. The students in the French club can vote to donate money to a parking lot, but otherwise, the school committee cannot direct this money.
So Aaron, when you say review account, when you say review account, are you, what specifically are you, is happening?
So we're within, within the accounting system that we use for this, um. Uh, Patrick would just create an account, um, a line item to hold some of this money, so as people deposit money, so we have one big account with one hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars in it. The accounting software really just creates a series of buckets, right, and all Patrick's gonna do is create new buckets for each of these classes.
Okay, yes, renewing an account just makes it seem like it's about to expire and we're.
Yeah, we're, we're, I don't, I don't know for a fact when, where, or how any of these accounts were approved. So I would just like to shore up the accounts, in fact, I usually go to school committee every single year. And just ask them to reauthorize all the accounts and any new accounts, just to be safe.
Uh, I, I wanted to go back to the question I was asking though, so, alright, so you, like, I get, like, I'm seeing this, you're moving ninety dollars, two hundred dollars, great, I don't care, then you tell us, oh, well, we've got a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that's a lot of money.
Yep.
Is the majority of that in undesigned funds?
No.
So like, where is this, like, if you told me we had twenty thousand, I'd be like, okay, a hundred thousand dollars.
P S A Ts, S A Ts has thirty-some thousand dollars in it.
Okay.
Uh, uh, again, this is money that's, that's been raised by students, they own this money.
Yeah, I get it, I get it.
You know, regardless whether it's in undesigned or not, it would need to be related to a student activity of some sort, it can't just be tracked.
So you, so you gave us this report, you didn't put the dollar figures for every single account?
No, 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 every single account, so, so you would, you would imagine that the class of twenty twenty-five, who's planning a prom and events like that. Would have a significant amount of money.
So I, I think at Meg, Meg's point, I think the accounting manager says, a hundred and thirty-four thousand, I'd only see like eight hundred or something.
Yes, yes.
Oh, what you're saying is, we have zeros, we know this, we. Or what you're saying is, we have zeros, we know that we have zero authority over this money. Then we just need the school committee to say, go ahead, school, keep these accounts created where they are.
Sure.
And what we're.
So for example, the, the yearbook has, again, they haven't, they're, all of the yearbooks are pending being paid for, right? So there's almost $10,000 in yearbooks. The drama club has almost $10,000 in it.
And they're paying for things.
I'm down the list, class of 2026 has 10,000.
All right.
Class of 2027 has 16,000, things like that.
The losses.
Undesignated funds is actually only 2,000.
Why would we, why would we put a cap on this? This is, why would we put a cap on it?
Uh, you're mandated to put a cap on it. So the, the requirement is that we come to, that, that you authorize a cap to the, the balance. There's certain activities that your, you know.
So if they have a car wash next month to clean everybody, pollen off in their car, they need $78,000, they can only take 15?
We would come back to you at the next meeting and ask you to authorize bringing it up. We're, we're trying to anticipate that no one's gonna, I don't think anyone's gonna have a $17,000 car wash. We're anticipating that the graduating class is gonna spend a lot of its money. Yearbook's money's gonna get spent, things like that, and a lot of money's gonna get cycled through.
Well, we're trying to, this, a lot of it, so we're trying to bring people having their own individual accounts, right? Or ten years ago, people used to keep it in their, in a lockbox in their classrooms and stuff like that, right? We're trying, so evidence, we just helps the student money, we just keep it here, but we don't spend it.
You know, I agree with the cap, I mean, I, it's, I don't like, I, for me, it's eye-opening that $134,000 is just sitting out there in assets. I understand that there are activities going on, like the prom and stuff like that, that you're gonna spend money on. $134,000 is a lot of money. I'm sure the prom is probably $20,000 or $30,000.
Good for them, or is it?
It is, but it's all, it's, some of it's old money, some of it, it's just money that's sitting there. So I feel like we need to do, I applaud Aaron for trying to get this cleaned up, and I think we need to do, kind of go through and make sure that things are being spent where they're supposed to be. Yeah, again, the AP stuff, yeah, I totally get it, that's expensive. But you know, that stuff isn't just kind of sitting there idle, like, parents are paying the dues, to your point, and then the money's kind of going in this black hole.
Well, no, with the prom, I mean, you see what these classes were left with, they were left with like $200. At one point, they had $30,000, and they dwindle it down. Like, it, it sounds alarming, I totally understand that, but I, for the level of high classes.
This, this looks totally normal to me.
Yeah, so if you, if you think about, like, each class, if you think about, each class has $15,000.
Yeah.
So that would be, you know, $60,000.
Yeah.
And then, and then you have, you know, yearbook has $15,000. Now we have $75,000. So your $134,000, all of a sudden, is not that much money.
Right.
Because it's, there really are buckets of money that have, that are gonna be used. And prom is very expensive, and then there's prom, there's dinner, there's yearbook.
We're approaching a point where they're going to spend it all, and it's.
Every year.
Yeah, so maybe we should get a year end, maybe we should be looking at year end reports. All right, I'm fine putting a cap on it.
We're just trying to clean this all up and get this in front of you guys so you see what it looks like, right? And all these obscure accounts that were out there.
Should we, uh, should we do a vote? Our motion, let the school committee vote to authorize the following actions. Authorize actions, describe the votes renewed or removed from identified student activity accounts and transfer balances remaining into remitted accounts to the identified accounts. And authorize a student activity agency account balance not to exceed $150,000 going forward. This is as presented in the SC memo, Student Activities, 2025-513, PDF to the drive.
Nobody wants to second after all that?
Second. No, you, no, somebody has to move the motion, and we do the amendment after.
Correct.
All right, so, so moved, I'll move the motion.
Okay, second.
Second.
All right.
All right, and then we have to make the amendment.
Does anyone want to make an amendment?
Yep, so I would like to amend that motion to say not the class of 2021 to reach out to disperse funds as well. So mine is 25772, in class of 2021. 38080 line, or count or whatever.
Did you get that, Nicole? It would just be to make an exception for the class of 2021, and rather than transfer funds, it would be to reach out to disperse funds. All right, I'll second the amendment.
Would anyone like to discuss it? All favor?
Aye.
Anyone against it? All right, so the remotes amended, would anyone like to discuss that? All favor?
Aye.
Anyone against it?
All right, that passes, thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that covers, um, thank you so much.
Thanks, Aaron. Yeah, next time, oh, no, yeah, Tracy's series. Yes, let's talk about the upcoming superintendent search update, thanks Tracy.
I apologize for not being there earlier.
It's okay.
Never underestimate the time that's left in coming. I realize that you do have the handout that I have for the two of you. I did make one tweak, it's honestly just adding, adding the date. I realized that I actually had to put in it when the position was closed. Which potentially is more for my knowledge than yours, but does make a lot of things worse. All of, there isn't any other change other than that. I do have a question to ask all of you. Just like, suddenly there's furniture. Do you have, certainly a question to ask all of you. So, just to review, in terms of, now that you have next year squared away, preparing for the full search for the permanent superintendent. We planned for getting started essentially right away. And in fact, I actually even have a bit of an assignment here for all of you to work on, however it is that you choose to do so over the summer. As, I think I mentioned, what, when we put together the brochure, which will become that which goes opposed to the position description, it has a description of the district, a bunch of the data about the district, description of the communities, and that actually comes from all of you. And so generally, we send it to the, the school committee chair, ask the chair to work with the administration, but also, you all know your capacities better than I, so if you've got somebody who's really good at, you know, putting together the description of the community or what have you, that really is up to all of you. My sense is that, I mean, we can, there's not any sort of restriction on when we do that. So my thought was to actually just send you that, you know, that worksheet right away and have you start working on it, with the idea that that would already be done then when we start entering all of this conversation in the fall. Then, having spoken to Mr. Gannam, my plan would be to be in central office the week before school starts. So as you know, things start to gear up in central office as we go through August. As part of that process, having a conversation with those who are in central office about what are the needs of the district, what do they see in district meeting in terms of leadership, what is working well, what is not, and so forth. Then, with the agreement of Mr. Gannam, the start date per faculty, which as you know is on August 26th, I will be in the district and actually do input sessions with the faculty as part of that. One thing that I really appreciate, I think is actually really important, is doing it as part of a thing that staff is going to be doing anyway, rather than a, here's an option that you can give input about. Makes a huge difference in terms of the level of participation. And so I really appreciate that actually just being part of the professional development day that day. As you all know, the first day of school is the 28th. Jeff, honestly, genuinely, rather than having a public survey open that day, my plan actually is to make it available to send the link to all of you, to the district leadership, so that it can go out with the back-to-school communication. And just make it part of, you know, those first newsletters and those first emails and make sure it gets on the website and everything else. Because as you have spoken of, you know, making this essentially part of the, we're coming back to school, we're planning for next year, is a really useful thing. So, you can, I guess, disregard that it would be actually opening on the 28th, but remark that it would be going on through the communication. I am gonna ask that, within that first week or two, there's some flexibility there, it'll depend on when people are meeting, I also get an opportunity to meet with your student council. And then I will schedule public input sessions in the evening. If you have strong feelings about how that should work, I'm happy to take your direction on that in terms of, sometimes two-town regional districts want to make sure that there's one in each town. Sometimes communities like to make sure that there's one in person and one online. I'm happy to do that, however you think would work best. Then I will be back before you for your meeting on September 23rd. And that really is a decision night for you. I will be coming back to you with a draft brochure, which will have all of the information that you've compiled for the, for the district profile in it. And I also will have a report for you that evening based on all of the input that I've gathered over the preceding number of weeks, from the survey, from the staff and faculty input, from the public input, from the student input, from central administration. I will bring that back to you with a draft position description, a draft of, here are the things that the, that the Brooklyn Boys St. Michael Schools are looking for in their next superintendent. That may be experiences, strengths, professional descriptions, what have you. But that is entirely under your purview. So I'll bring you a draft, it will be up to you to deliberate and to figure out exactly how you want that to be phrased. The other thing that you'll be doing that evening is I'll be asking you to determine the makeup of your search committee. There are some sort of general outlines as to who tends to be on it in terms of, you know, there's usually parents, there's usually teachers, there's usually representation from central administration. I highly recommend having at least one student on it and so forth. I'll be bringing to you that evening a, here's what I would recommend kind of list. And then it will not only be up to you to determine the size and to prove what the seats are, but how those seats get appointed that evening. Again, it is entirely under your purview, so if you all want to actually appoint by name, you can. I've also had a number, a growing number of communities ask essentially for applications. And then I try to make sure that I balance out the committee through the selection process. Again, not a tonight decision, but something that I'll be asking you to do that, for that meeting in September. We would then host the position by the end of that week. And it would be open, yes, right, so it would be open for about a month. So the paper version that I have shared with you, you'll see that the position is on the job board. We generally have positions closed on a Friday. The one thing that I would do in between the position posting and the position closing is that I would meet once with the search committee. Something that we do is train your search committee, because they are a public body, so they are subject to the open meeting law, they are subject to the conflict of interest law. They also, of course, are operating largely in executive session, which means that they have responsibilities there. Of course, they're also an interview committee, which means that they have sort of hiring responsibilities. We train our search committees in all of those things. It will also be sort of essentially a first meeting for them, so they get a chance to meet each other prior to, after work. When the position closes on the 24th, I share those electronically, all of the applications electronically, with the search committee. As you know, those applications are confidential. They're confidential not only in terms of content, but also in terms of, you know, who applied. I also generally keep confidential how many until you actually get the full report at the end, so that we don't get distracted by numbers and actually get to the part that matters, which is the word we end up on the end of this. The search committee on that evening in October will be select, going through all of the applications together in executive session. They will be making the determination that evening as to who they want to bring in as semifinalists for interviews in confidential executive session. I would propose that those interviews be on the week of November 3rd. You then, I assume, are displacing your usual Tuesday, which would be in November 11th meeting to, and maybe you're not doing it on the, the 10th, but that was a guess on my part. I can't meet later in that week because this is a joint conference. But when you do meet, that would be when they then would be publicly announcing the finalists to you. Now, at this point, everything after that is in green. And the reason for that is that as soon as it passes over to all of you, we have scheduling questions. So, the discussion that I had had with you when we were talking about timelines, really the couple of times that you've done it while I've been here, has been that you would be finishing the search and would have your next superintendent at least selected, you might still be in contract negotiations, before you broke for the winter break, essentially before the end of the calendar year. Now, though, what that means is that this, once this, the semifinalists are interviewed and the finalists are selected, the process turns back over to the school committee. And so it's the work of the school committee that then happens between that November 10th date and the end of the calendar year. If there's going to be any sort of scheduling difficulties, if there's complications, I know people make plans, people may have holiday plans, people may generally take various kinds of vacations during that time. If that is the case, we should know that now, we should decide that now and not commit to a timeline that's going to essentially not be something that we can keep. If you do, as a committee, are sure that you will all be able to have the weeks of, in particular, you would need to have a meeting that middle of November in order to announce the finalists. You committee members would need to free up some time during those weeks, particularly the week before Thanksgiving. I also did include the 24th, because there are two days of school in the, the next week, to be able to visit the home districts of finalists. That is something that I think is actually a really good perspective for school committee members to have. You do that in non-quorum pairs, and yes, it generally does happen during the school day. And then you also would be able to run, would need to be able to all be here to run interviews during that first week of December. So really, the main question, Mr. Chair, for you all is whether or not that is something that is achievable by the committee? Because it's entirely, it's entirely up to you. It's, you know, we can, we can reschedule this to be happening in January. It does mean that you won't be finishing the search by the end of the calendar year. I try not to be sort of fear-mongering, but I will say that having searches completed by the end of the year does tend to be a sort of fairly traditional pattern. So what that does to less those who apply, but whether or not we get to a point where finalists are taking positions other places because you're waiting until after vacation, that is always a possibility. And it's sort of, you know, to be realistic. So, but again, it is, it's your search, it's your decision, it's your calendars. You know best what you can keep to and what you can't. But that last part in particular, would be what I would be interested in from the school committee, although of course I'm happy to discuss them and they're part of this, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Tracy. First question, does anybody have a major problem with those dates?
Of the November, the December, or?
Right.
I mean, not now.
Yeah.
I mean, it's May.
So.
Well, and so then, I think probably, Mr. Chair, then that really becomes, I mean, honestly, one of the things I like about doing this, to be quite honest with you, is that I then go in and I actually put it all in my calendar and I already know. If you all are willing to make that commitment such that you know you're just going to be scheduling everything else around this because you want to make sure the search gets done by then, that you, again, you know you're.
So nobody has a big schedule, so it comes in advance.
Exactly.
I mean, my schedule comes out four minutes in advance, so. So I, I'm curious, like, the, you said, set time aside during the school day, how many days of those weeks are you imagining, or is realistic, or?
So, going by, so understanding, of course, that we don't know for sure how many finalists should be presented with, right? I will tell you upfront, I always tell school committees, search committees, they need to bring forward at least three, just because sometimes finalists say no. And as you may or may not know, you can't bring forward only a single finalist because then you've completed the search in executive session and you'd have to go back and start it all over again. That's literally illegal. So, there, I have had searches bring forward five finalists, three finalists, four finalists. What you would need to be doing then is having school committee members visit the home districts of that many people. And it essentially just becomes a, a big chart that I make of, these are the days that the home districts can host and these are the days that school committee members available. It is, it is hard if we, if we have people who can't do it at all, it is certainly understandable. I get it, right, it's work day. If there are people who say, you know, if I know in advance, I can say that I can take this Wednesday, then we do our level best to use the fact that they have that Wednesday.
So Tracy and I and Nicole met and we're looking at calendars. You guys have not approved your school committee calendar for next year? So made it hot for us those November dates. But the, the one pause that I said to Tracy, maybe looking at that week before Thanksgiving, does that work in your schedules as school committee members as well?
The week of Thanksgiving, I think, is to do, you're saying that we'd be doing in-district visits?
So the in-district visits, one would, would largely be completed the week before that, which is the week of the 17th. which is the week of the 17th.
Okay.
The, I like to be able to give the added flexibility of wrapping around to the Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week if at all possible. Now, remember, you're going to be doing both things because the calendar goes in both directions. So that also means the district is going to be hosting the finalists during that time too. And again, because if I say only a week, that gives us five days to have you go to as many districts as there are and also have those finalists all come here. If we can add the two days, then if nothing else, we get the added flexibility of those additional times. I do, by the way, also try to avoid the days before vacations because, like, no one's getting a realistic perspective on anything that day.
Yeah, that's all I'm thinking is usually I know, like, our schools are like chaos and everybody's sick and, you know, it's just insane.
We will, we will certainly run into some of that November regardless, for sure.
Yeah, so I don't know if it just makes sense to plan on, like, the week before Thanksgiving and then the week after Thanksgiving. I get that's the first week of December, but I don't know. That's my only thought, otherwise the schedule works fine for me.
Anybody else in the hosting here? Tracy and I will coordinate that, right? So that will be, you guys, you guys have to be here, they'll all, they'll coordinate.
You actually want to have to be here in those days? Yeah, so, right, it's, it really, the, the part in the November piece is really just about I can free up this Tuesday and this Thursday, or I can free up this, you know, on Monday and this. And I will, you know, I will be in Massachusetts and I can actually do that. And then also that first week of December, I know we will be here. We can schedule either one long meeting or multiple shorter meetings to make sure that the interviews happen. Because obviously, we don't want to be scheduling that. And I did have a, one of my colleagues had a search where someone went on vacation when they were doing interviews. And it would be great if that weren't happening because obviously, we want to be part of the decision.
Questions? What's that?
Your extreme.
Yeah. I'm great.
And so just so you know then, what I will do is I will, first of all, I'll send the updated one that actually has when the position closes to you. I'm sorry. And send a non-green version to the district so that this then can go up on the website. And this is also something, by the way, that goes into, not the input sessions, but the rest of it, actually goes into the brochure. So people who are applying already know, oh, this is when the semifinalists are going to be selected. This is when you're going to be doing an interview. This is when you're going to be making your selection plan. I also will say that I think that it's nice to have that. You're planning on interviews for the first week of December. If, you know, we have havoc ensue and days off or what have you, we can, you know, we still have some time in December to get this done before the end of the calendar year. So.
We already have Tracy on the agenda for our opening day, so we're coordinating all that, so should we have a agenda? To go with this civil timeline, right, with our staff as well?
Yeah. And I'm making a note, Mr. Chair, that I will send you the, the district description, the profile via email. And then again, you can decide how you want to piece that out and work with Mr. Anam and his staff in terms of how you get it.
Yeah, unfortunately Lori's not with us tonight. She's sort of the search something chair. She's not feeling well, but I'll talk about that later.
Yeah, it may be something where she wants to head out the effort and...
Yeah.
Piece it out from there.
Well, yeah, we can definitely figure that out. You know, nobody has currently scheduled plans those weeks, it sounds like. So I don't know about Lori, but I'll definitely check with her.
Okay, that would also be useful, thank you.
Yeah.
So, so just for, for the week of, like, the finalists interviews, how many days would you imagine would be realistic to people after?
So the day of the, of the interviews, the interviews are in the evening. They're public meetings. And it will be up to the committee to decide if you want to run them sort of one interview per evening, or if you want to do them all one after the other. And that may partly have to do with how many finalists you have.
I have to block my schedule.
Sure.
Moving ten patients is kind of rude last minute, so I try to avoid it. So that's why I'm asking, like, how should I block my schedule?
No, so what actually will be great then is if we're...
You just went through it a couple, like, months ago, so probably be simple.
Well, and the other thing is that what will be good is you'll know how many finalists you have on November 10th. So we can even have that evening, I will be with you that evening, we can even have that conversation that night of when do you want to actually plan then to schedule the interviews of the week of December 1st? Yes, no? That's it, that's even a good practice because then we can let everybody know ahead of time.
Yeah. Anything else? Anybody have any last questions?
I'm excited for the conference and I hope other people go too.
Well, that was why I was like, I can come on the 10th, but then after that, my time belongs to the associations. Yes, I hope some of you can join us at the conference. Yeah, we're a little bit, we're kind of a week later this year. We started with that Wednesday rather than ending it.
Soon as Lori improves this, and not just proves, but get her input on those dates, that will get us on the district website as well, too. Yeah. Yeah, I know we don't have the calendar for next year yet, but I mean, it's just typically, you know, this is the second Tuesday of the month. So we played with that November date when Nicole and I and Tracy met because of the way the holidays felt, right? Yeah, that's really, you know, the October dates, September dates are second Tuesdays, right? So we just have to be mindful of this when we're putting our calendar together in the school committee, like, make sure that we have those dates good.
And is there, like, no school on that Monday too, the 10th? I can't remember the school calendar. That's like a really long weekend, I thought.
We looked at that though, it was November.
Monday is PD day. And then Tuesday is a no school for the holiday. And then, don't you guys have the conferences like the week before?
Conferences, it's actually that same thing.
No, I mean, like, school conferences, like, for parent-teacher. I just feel, yeah. So the week after Veterans Day, I think, is fine. Yeah, that's weird, we've never, it's never fallen, school committee meeting has never fallen on the holiday. So, yeah, it would be, it should be the 11th, right?
Good, all right. Anything, Tracy, any last words of advice? Thanks for coming in, thanks, Tracy.
Of course, yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, I mean, you wanted to talk about, have Lisa do her, I've read an update, I'm sorry. We could do that later, we got some guests, and I'm so sorry we kept you. But you enjoyed her, our school committee meeting so far.
That's not working.
I'm gonna, if we could go into Lisa.
Yes, so I am really excited tonight. My report is kind of a one, one point. And we have our esteemed guest, Mrs. Irene Berry, who is retired from the district. She was world language teacher extraordinaire as well as the world language department chair. And Steve Pacheco, who is currently the history, social sciences department chair, and extraordinary in all that he does, and our varsity softball currently coach right now, so. But I invited them here today. And there was another staff member who was not able to come this evening. And it really is to honor the legacy that our staff leaves in, in our students. And I think that's something that really needs to be lifted up and we need to feel very, very proud of. So I received this letter. My name is Brendan Shanahan. I teach U.S. and Canadian history at Yale University. I'm a proud graduate of Boylston Elementary School and of Tejant Regional Middle High School, class of 2007, ghost ads. My first book, Disparate Regimes: Nativeist Politics, Alienage, Law, and Citizenship Rights in the United States, 1865 to 1965, was recently published by Oxford University Press. I am sending a hardcover, hardcover copy of Disparate Regimes to Mr. Pacheco to review. And this is, this is, I can't imagine how you feel of being recognized. In the book's acknowledgement section, "I recognize the foundational education I received from the schools of the Berlin Boylston Regional School District and my teachers at BES and Tejant. I meant every word. I thank Mr. Pacheco specifically, along with Mrs. Irene Berry, Mr. Patrick Minahan, for launching my interest in North American immigration history." He outlines that in, in the acknowledgement sections. Brendan's journey is not only a reflection of his own dedication, but also a reflection of the educators who guided him along the way. This serves as a powerful reminder of how the power the educators have to transform the lives of young people and the future. And Brendan's success is really one of many that highlight the great things we do at the Berlin Boylston School District. And I wanted to acknowledge Miss Irene Berry and Mr. Steve Pacheco for their contributions and being a legacy. And so, and so this serves as, to me, like, thank you for the public for supporting what we do because it is so incredibly important. And I don't know, did you, you've been reviewing the book. I know, I know it's the end of the year, so not a lot of extra time. But is there any, was there anything that you wanted to say about the book or about Brendan or?
Well, it's, it's an overwhelming piece of scholarship, actually. There are about 60 pages of notes at the end when we got to, you know, his sources and that sort of thing. It is a tremendous piece of scholarship. Probably aren't anything I ever taught, that's for sure. But it's just a impressive piece of work. And it is something that he was oddly passionate about, even as a teenager. Wasn't like anything I directed him towards. It was motivating Brendan is like motivating a shark to attack seal. But he really, so I'm quite proud of him to acknowledge me in this, in this piece of work. It's, it's obviously topical, but it's really more associated with 19th century. So it's not really a work by industry's imagination. But there's, it is a great reference, it's sort of the history of immigration in this country and how it connects to boarding rights and citizens' rights and, and census and even, you know, licensure for professional work with the government and even RUCAL work. And there is a, there is a verb about building the Clinton Dam.
Right.
And that's, which is really cool in regards to the workforce that was needed to build the Clinton Dam. And of course, then you had the conflict between the Irish existing workforce and the Italian immigrants, and that was very interesting. And I really know the rule of law. So, so, no, it's, 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 it's a book that talks about the varying policies of state for state, but it is also local, because it gives a little bit of different. It's a wonderful, but tenancy.
Well, thank you, thank you so much both for coming. And that is my lifting up of what happens at Tejant. Nothing could highlight that more. I'm going to, or you guys can, really, so I want to give a hug.
So that's a copy donated to the school?
Yes, yes.
So that's here for anybody to check up?
Yes, absolutely, after Mr. Pacheco finishes it.
Did you autograph that as well too? Or so did you?
You did, yep. Yeah, so I did want to make sure that Mr. Pacheco, the first read.
It says, "Tejant teachers is to these past and present ghost ads with deep appreciation of Brendan Shanahan."
Great as that.
Oh, that's awesome.
Great as that. Nice job. No, that's, I mean, we talked, one of the first things we talked about was celebrating things like this.
Yep, exactly.
Thank you very much, thank you both for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks. Thanks, everybody, thank you guys. Thanks for taking us out on the day.
Yeah. Who wants to go next? I think we're on you now.
Yeah, do, we want to do, you want to go me first? Or you guys say Cindy, can we do the principal's thing? Just have that piece be done?
Segue in.
Because I think we're completely out of work.
Sorry about that.
I'm up?
Go ahead.
All right, so just a couple of things happening at BES. Well, there's a lot of things happening at BES, it's the end of the year. I want to highlight Nature's Classroom first. Fifth grade students and four of our staff members, chaperones, left this morning. A little late, but they left. Check out the Facebook page, those, the students were ecstatic. They were singing as they left. We have some great pictures on there.
Beautiful day today too, right?
Yeah, it's going to be a beautiful week. I'm glad it wasn't last week because they would have gotten, they wouldn't have minded. They don't mind the rain, but very good trip. The kids were really happy, a couple of parents cried because it might be the first time the children are leaving for a few days, but they're really excited. I do have a note in there that next year, we do not want them in the uncast window. This is the uncast window. And we have all this month until the 29th, I believe, it closes. So they're gone this week. We have third and fourth grade taking math this week. And when they come back, we have makeup week. So we kind of don't want that trip in there, so. That's in there.
Do we notice, yes.
It's in there for a reason. It's a time of assessment right now at the end of the year for everybody. So AMES Web is going on. So we're in the middle of that. I would like to have shown you some of the results. We're not done yet. So AMCAST takes the cake right now, and then we're doing AMES Web as well. So a couple of things that were going on. This was the year math, and we've really seen some nice growth in math. I'm really looking forward to seeing, even though I will not be here, I'm looking forward to seeing the math scores next year. I will be looking. So we've been monitoring, you know, the AMES Web since, you know, all year. Really, the winter, there was a couple dips in our scores, one of which was math in one grade, which we, you know, the teachers did a great job of attacking Y. And we, we really assessed that data. One of the reasons why that particular grade did not start the wind block until December of then, so where everyone else started it and they noticed a dip. So they really jumped into that. We do not have their scores yet, just show you their growth, but give it another couple weeks. And another area that we noticed a dip in winter was the KELA. And this happened last year too. So they're really looking into the Y. And there's a couple of things they're talking about is when we take those little five, they're five and six years old. We take them out of the room and BMS and BES, their team assesses these kids. They don't know some of these tests, the testers. We take them out of the room, we walk them down the hall and we, we're testing them on these things and we're wondering why. That could be a part of it, it's not everything. But then we've been progress monitoring them, and when we progress monitoring them, they're doing great. And then we take them out and we do a benchmark and they're a little low. So we're kind of looking at that as well.
The data on benchmark across the country, and I know John's on there itself, is they, they drop in the winter. It's a natural progression for kindergarten kids. And I wish, I wish I could tell you the exact reason why. My previous curriculum director told me the reason why that takes place. And then you see that surge back up again in the spring, every winter.
Back up, but we haven't even done it. But there's a lot more skills in the winter benchmark.
That's right. So somehow there's a dip in the winter and back up again this...
But my team doesn't want to see them dip. They really tap that to the why they're dipping and they look at everything. It's really interesting to see their progress monitoring because the progress monitoring is up here and then, and they're like, why? So they're very excited about that, they're really looking at that. A highlight of, one of the teams went up 20% in both ELLA and math. That was huge, that was the first grade, first grade team. So we're kind of, I want to see their scores this, as well too, but they're just not done yet. But they're, they're really jumping in to see what, what, what can we do to bring these kids to where they need to be in student success, so. Other than that, events at the bottom. You're welcome to attend any of them. They're coming up and it's a very busy time of year there.
So this week, Nature's Classroom, John's gone. Early part of the week, Gera there on Friday as well, too.
I don't stay over.
The kids come back, and the kids come back Friday afternoon.
They come back around 2:00.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
What time is tomorrow?
That is too short.
So I had three topics in the report that you submitted having to do with our new special education determination rating from DESI, an update on our Bridges program, as well as talking a bit about our special education coordinator role in the district. I'm actually going to start there. It's a great segue to the other two topics. And I added this to the report just based on the attention in recent months that the special education coordinator role has received. And wanted to take the opportunity to share some information about the essential nature of the role in our district. about the essential nature of the role in our district, given that, you know, some of you may not have interacted or maybe a handful of families or a majority of families haven't interacted with the special education coordinator. We have two in the district. We have one at Tejant and then we have one that is halftime at Berlin Memorial and the other half at Boylston Elementary School. Both are certified as special education administrators by DESI and average twenty years of experience in special education each. And as you're going to hear in my subsequent reports on our DESI rating as well as our Bridges program, there's a great deal of technical compliance and interpersonal sensitivity in special education across the board. And both of these folks are really critical to all of that work. They have highly nuanced set of skills and responsibilities that are really critical to student well-being, family engagement, staff support, as well as legal compliance. They're both in very busy positions. They participate, they coordinate, participate and facilitate about two hundred meetings per year each. And in Berlin Boyer, I'm sorry, in Berlin-Boylston, our special education coordinators are also our preschool coordinators. So if, you know, if any of the families are coming in, oftentimes the special ed coordinator is their first point of contact in our school system. And there's a whole set of work and compliance and interpersonal skills that go with preschool as well. That's fairly unique in our district that the roles are overlapping that way. So really, this position supports families during some of their most vulnerable moments, guides staff in complex and structural behavioral decisions, helps maintain balance and motionality in classrooms across the districts. Their work impacts all students, not only those with disabilities. And as I like to say, the role is really greater than the sum of its parts. In my report, I had shared with you a couple of dozen, you know, most bullet points of tasks that the special education coordinators do very specific to their roles. But really, any of those, the importance of our special ed coordinators is much more than just those bullet points. It's really a collective nature. So I want to just, I appreciate the time to be able to talk about that role. We don't often do that in our committees. But again, I know that there's a fair amount of folks that don't have experience with the special ed coordinator or maybe even as preschool, with them as a preschool coordinator.
And there was a lot of conversation during the budget writing about the special ed coordinator. I'm not sure if people really fully understand what the responsibilities of that job were. So we felt it was important to make sure we got that out there. Thanks, Janelle.
Okay, so I just, you're advocating for Tejant not to be cut. Is that so?
Yeah, I mean, it is really an essential role. As I wrote in my report, we've had both of those special education coordinator positions for at least as long as the fifteen years that I've been in the district. And I don't think that they, you know, just appeared that year. You know, they've been here in some iteration for a very long time. And I do think that it's really critical, you know, to the success, the compliance, the quality of our special education programs to be able to keep that special education coordinator position at Tejant. So, you know, looking at some changes in out of district needs at Tejant specifically may very well give us a segue to bring back that position. That's what we're looking at.
And that's our hope as well too. So we're still working on that. We're at this point, because we're in the job market right now, we're posting out there for anticipated, just to see what's going to take place with that.
None of us wanted to really make the cuts that were made.
We appreciate that support.
Thanks, Janelle.
Sure, of course. I'll move on to my next, my second topic, which is Bridges. So an update on our Bridges program, which as you may know is our special education program to support students with significant and complex developmental needs. We have students in the district all the way, really from preschool all the way through twelfth grade. I know that we often talk about it at the elementary level and indeed, the majority of my report does focus on the elementary level, but I haven't forgotten about the Tejant needs here as well. So both Berlin and Boylston Elementary School have a Bridges classroom. The one at Boylston has been there since 2018 and Berlin since 2023. They each right now have a developmentally appropriate cohort. And we are anticipating a total of eleven students next year at those elementary levels. That really demonstrates and reflects an increased need for this type of programming in our district, which is not unique to Berlin-Boylston. School districts everywhere are seeing this level of need. And we've been very responsive to that level of need. And in that spirit, as an admin team, we've really assessed, well, what do we need to do to continue to meet this level of need and the projected growth here? So what we're looking at for next school year is really some imbalanced group sizes in Berlin and Boylston and also an inefficient use of our resources given that projected enrollment. The admin team has worked on that and looked at it and is bringing really a recommendation to bring both of those elementary Bridges classrooms together under one roof. There are clear disadvantages and even disadvantages really for which building would be best suited to host that. Overall, we have a recommendation for Boylston Elementary School. There's simply more available space. It's on one floor. It requires, you know, less movement and even the classrooms themselves are a little bit larger. Having the program together under one roof at the elementary level is really what's best for students. Right now, we would be looking at one classroom hosting two students and the other one hosting nine. That puts us into a host of logistical issues with nine students in one space. We're running out of physical space. It's not an ideal group size at that level. There's a lot of, there tends to be a lot of equipment, adults that need to come in and out. And again, it's really just not best for students. Academic, social and emotional needs would be much better addressed in smaller group sizes. Having those students in under one roof allows us to divide those groups differently so that they, maybe they live like five and six or four and seven, something like that as opposed to two and nine. Much different. It also allows us to really utilize our staffing resources, even our equipment and our subscriptions very differently. We believe we can do this without creating any additional cost for either Berlin or Boylston. It's not necessarily cost savings, but it doesn't increase costs. And it is a more sustainable model that we would be very committed to for the long term to meet these evolving needs for students. We've talked about it with our CPAC, our Special Education Care and Advisory Council, to get some feedback. Very supportive of the idea. I would like to get some input as well from the anticipated Boylston principal for next year. Overall, in the spirit of, you know, making sure that we're developing that program pre-K all the way through twelve, we've been working with Case Collaborative to develop opportunities for improvements in all areas such as program vision and alignment, instructional materials, staffing, professional development, supervision and even long-term planning for the program as well. Not wanting to miss out on the importance of students as they're growing older and they are moving up to Tejant, which has been happening. We are probably at this point just about overdue or about to be overdue to add a special education teacher at Tejant as well to meet the growing needs of students in this area. Again, remembering that Tejant also services seventh grade levels and needing to be able to meet those needs as we look ahead. So that would be something that I would recommend to our admin team that we consider for the FY twenty second budget. And my third topic is earlier in May, DESI released the new special education annual determination ratings. As you may remember, we received a rating in January of last school year. So this one felt like it took a long time to come out. It is new to us and the admin team really is looking at all of the data to understand it. We did receive a meets requirements rating, which is the top tier rating, which we believe is very well deserved. This, this year, DESI did change the way that the rating is calculated as they do just about each year, so that doesn't come as a surprise. There's a fair amount of overlap in looking at the criteria or the considerations that were in last year's report and this year's report. They were just maybe broken down differently. For example, last year, MCAS, all of the scores for MCAS for grades four, eight and ten were sort of lumped together in one score. This year, they're broken down a little bit more and looks at the proficiency rating for students with disabilities. I looked actually at seventeen different considerations across three categories of performance, compliance and even other considerations. So very briefly, it looks at like items such as graduation, MCAS proficiency, integration rates of preschool students, suspension issues, any disproportionate representation, especially among specific disability categories. It looks at our responsiveness and compliance with child find, early childhood transitions, any issues of non-compliance, although we didn't have any in that period, whether or not they would be corrected very quickly. It looked at a couple of fiscal areas such as our maintenance of effort, our timely and accurate reporting for students' progress in preschool as well as post-secondary readiness, accurate, reliable, equitable services count. And then let us know a couple of additional areas that they're going to be looking at in future years such as the percentage of children that make progress in preschool as well as the percentage of students engaged in activities after high school that meet certain criteria such as competitive employment, post-secondary training and education. So we're very pleased with that, with the new rating. And we are, as I said, digging into some of the data that came along with it because it is quite a bit of data.
It's great news. I knew you should, I would see that as well too, correct?
Yes, I did. Yes, there, pleased to hear that as well. Yes, thank you.
Great news. Nice work from that.
Thank you.
I didn't give any time for questions for Cindy or Janelle. So does anybody want to take one right now?
I just wanted to just for Janelle. I just wanted, I really appreciate the work you put into looking into how to make the Bridges like sustainable and stable for the kids for the, for the big picture, long term. Because looking at nine kids in the Berlin classroom with their corresponding adults is, that's crazy. It's a small classroom. It's unfair to everybody. And so to come up with a solution that works to provide them with long-term stability is great. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, it was really a group effort, but thank you.
And I appreciate the explanation on the special ed coordinator. That was very helpful.
Sure, my pleasure.
Anybody else?
And just the Memorial Day, is that two PM?
Yes.
And then in Berlin, I think it's in the morning?
Yes.
The Memorial Day.
Oh, sorry.
Like, what time is that, Cindy? There's like a concert or a show.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
So we've been very lucky for the past, prior to this school year, five years, working with an organization called Education Development Center. And they partnered with DESI in the digital literacy and computer science department. They were, we were lucky to have an extension of that grant for this year. And so as a result of that, we were able to use some of those funds to develop a new COVID course for our high school students, which is showing a high number of us, which is very exciting. And we also, our eighth graders taking computer science discoveries created some applications through that course that were helpful to younger students in grades K through two in learning some basic things like alphabet and numbers and colors and things like that. They were invited to Mr. State College over the winter for our university, as she said, to participate in an exhibition where they won a couple of awards. And as a result, they're also being invited back to a second exhibition that's going to be taking place on June third. They changed the location a couple of times and they've even changed it one more time since I submitted this report. So it's no longer at EDC in Walden, but at a tech company in Burlington. But we're very excited for them. I plan to go see how that's going. Another piece of information about grants that's exciting is that through one of our SICRers, we were able to fund a presenter. His name is Evered Desi. He's actually a former colleague that I worked with when we were teaching at Hopkins Middle School, who left teaching to create a leadership academy for students that builds students' self-esteem, confidence, that teaches students about, you know, giving ten out of ten for every, all the things that you do. So from part of that grant, we were able to fund him to come in and present to our sixth, seventh and eighth graders. They each had a separate presentation. He's very dynamic, he's very engaging. He gets them up and moving around. They really loved it. We had a survey done to collect some data on how teachers and students felt about that and the results were really positive. And what's also really exciting is that he takes the fee that he charges and gives it back as scholarships. So we actually have an opportunity for three of our eighth graders going into ninth grade to attend his Enjoy Education Academy at Hudson College this summer. So the counseling department's in the process of choosing those students right now. So that's very exciting. So I just kind of gave a little overview of some of the things that we did this year. As you saw in the report, we did a lot of work with safety care and ABA training, also safety in general for the entire district. We did have some vertical alignment sessions between grades five and six for all four of the core subject areas. We also did some book studies. Our staff here at Tejant, some of them read the book High Expectations Teaching by John Saffier. And then the counseling department had another one called Anxious Generation. And our own admin team is doing a book study on the book Teach Like a Champion by Doug Momo. Also, we had some topics about artificial intelligence in the classroom. There were several series of special development. For instance, at the elementary level, there's the year of math. And there was also at all schools, a lot of work around school-like goals that have been developed to help reduce gaps between our high need students and our non-high need students. And now that we're getting towards the end of the year and some of our faculty meetings, we started to introduce the concept of UDL, or Universal Design for Learning, which we talked about at our last school committee meeting. And we are really excited to be bringing in a UDL guru, Katie Novak, to kick off our opening day. And we are ordering her book, which is entitled UDL Now for our staff. Our wellness committee took a lot of time this year to prepare presentations to inform our community about our new wellness policy. We were able to visit all three faculties from each of the schools. We visited school councils, the boosters, the CPAC, also the PTO. I was, had a really great time, actually. Went into the health classrooms at both elementary schools from grade one through five with a separate presentation that was, you know, more child-friendly. And we have collected a lot of data from those presentations. We also sent it out to families, by the way, in the newsletter. And so our charge for next year is to take that information that we took from those presentations, all the feedback and input, and make some adjustments to the policy in terms of areas that need clarification or where there might need to be some updates due to federal regulations. We have one last thing that we're trying to book right now, that new sweet savory club that you voted in. They have agreed to have us come in, do a presentation and do some cooking with them. So we're just waiting to hear back on some clues for that. And then finally, our STEAM committee really picked up some momentum this year. We were able to not only enlist some staff, but also some parents. And through that collaboration, we developed something called the Aureka Series, which is our attempt to bring in somebody from the STEAM field each spring and each fall to come and talk with our community and inspire students. We were very lucky to have one of our parents, Erica, works at UMass and knows Victor Ambrose, who was the recent 2024 Nobel Prize winner. And I know we talked about that event and I saw some of you there. So he and his wife, Candy, were here the other day and gave a nice presentation to, it was a small group of people, but the people that came were clearly very interested in that topic. And I was really excited to see after, during the meet greet session, some students going up to Victor and speaking to him individually and just, you know, some of the kids saying to me how they felt that it was so exciting and inspiring. So that was a great event. And we are looking forward to coming up with somebody else for the fall.
Sal, here, the first part, you mentioned the kids that were coding with Python. So I just counted this today. In the last three or four months, I've interviewed 154 college grads, either for full-time or as interns for our company. Just about every single one that moved on had Python and projects that listed that they had worked in Python on their resume. So that is definitely something that is like the new thing.
That's great to hear. Thanks for sharing that.
And I just want to say that event with the Nobel laureate was amazing. It was really great. And I loved how the students were so engaged and they asked such great questions. It was really, and I'm sure it really inspired a lot of them in a lot of different ways.
Talking about a humbling experience with those people in that room. They were just so, really, so brilliant.
Thank you.
We did capture the AURICA Series. It's on a YouTube page for anybody that wants to go back and see it. All right, where are we here? We already took care of Joe, right? Do you want to add?
Sure. If we just do this on screen, please, real quick.
Sure. Jess, anything to do with success and technology?
Yeah, we had actually an amazing meeting back on April 17th. Joe talked to us about the content filtering and also the BYOB device that he touched upon earlier and whether or not those protections are to be extended outside our Wi-Fi into the home as well. Which, as a parent of a sixth grader, I would appreciate that because I have more strict restrictions on our devices than what comes home. But obviously, that's something that needs to be discussed further. The meeting that we had had back on February, we talked about the Attorney General's packet and about cell phones. And, and so it talked about three different types of policies. So bell-to-bell, secured, off and away, and limited use can be used during designated time. So we had talked about doing kind of a pilot during refresh day, a cellphone-free lunch day. And so Lisa and Renee and Cara Ford also talked to us about the experiences of the students and the staff. We talked about outside time for high school and the middle school and noise levels, too. And then we talked about, there was a different refresh day at the elementary school, too, where little cards were left on the table for different interactions and sit with different people. So that was interesting. And then Mr. Campbell also noted that there was a lot of issues with phones. And ultimately, the data really supports taking them out of the schools because kids' depression, anxiety, and suicide rate are being affected by them. And so within the Attorney General's packet, they mentioned grassroots. So it really has to be parent-led and the culture needs to be changed. And so even before, this was on our agenda. Parents in the fifth grade at Boyles Elementary had approached Cindy to create this cybersecurity with the Boyleson Police Event, which I just, you know, popped into. And there was a lot of talking about cyberbullying and safety, but it was really parent-driven. There was a lot of concern, fifth-grade parents, about cyberbullying. And so I did ask one of those parents who had approached Cindy to come to the meeting as well. You know, because within that Attorney General packet, the toolkit, they mentioned the new norm cellphone advisory board. And so that would have to be led by some parents to spearhead that. And so I think there are quite a few parents within the community that would be able to do that. There was other resources that I had mentioned, the wait until eighth, which is wait for cell phones until after eighth grade. The Anxious Generation book that's been mentioned many times, that has some pretty concerning data in it and trends since smartphones have come out in 2013. And then also like a Let Grow movement, too, which is to allow children more independence to decrease their anxiety, too. And so all of these would have to be parent-led, and a new advisory board would be formed. And then we had the April 16th cyberbullying presentation. I know that was reported. I didn't know, had that gone out in some form or somewhere? I don't.
I got to check on that.
Okay.
What was it? There were the District Attorney's Office, I'm sorry, delayed presentation. We recorded that. Do we have that? We did not receive that yet. Okay, I can reach out to them for that.
It'd be wonderful to share it within that lens.
And Julia, we told them ahead of time it's going to be recorded, and they knew that, so we can get that.
And then we, you know, we talked about ultimately we need to reach out to the districts. And so Cara Ford had gone to a conference, actually, regarding some of this. So she'd forwarded some materials recently for us to reach out to different schools to get their experience about the different policies they have passed. And then kind of the final topic on the agenda was exploration of organizational, organization culture survey from recent events. And so it is actually going to be taking place as part of the strategic plan. So it was really nice to have a huge group of people to see what was happening because, you know, we tend to work in silos. So it was really nice to have that exchange of information and ideas. And then the very end, we just were brainstorming how to better utilize, mobilize, kind of match the community resources with the teacher, the school needs. You know, there's no direct access, so to speak. Like, I want to donate to Mrs. Woodward's class for potato growing because, and so, you know, we no longer are supposed to use the teachers, whatever site, you know, that is direct funding. But maybe we can create an avenue that we can, you know, abide by our policies and say, yes, we did money launder for this, but we say, I would like to donate for this need, and it's now the school's, you know, property. But it just, in order to enrich the kids' education and allow the teachers to be a little bit more creative and connect people in the community that do want to help and can help. So that was a long summary, but it was a really great meeting, so.
Thanks, Jess. Megan, do you have anything for budget facilities?
Uh, no, we have not had.
All right. Laura's not here to talk about superintendent search, but Jess, you're on that one. Tracey's update is probably, it covers it, yeah?
That's, yep, we have not had a meeting, so.
All right. And then the last thing, the sort of Tohoto parking lot that's on there, we talked about that last time. I got a message from Matt. I don't know if you have anything more recent, but he said that so sketches were submitted to DCR. They asked some questions, came back, wanted some different layouts for smaller spaces. But Al, I think we need to get on this in some way, shape, for next year. The town meeting that was here, great. This car's parked up and down 70.
Yep.
They're on the grass anyway. Might as well make it an official parking lot.
Yep.
It's a safety issue if you've got people coming into the school for events, parking on the highway, state highway. You know, God forbid, there's someone who's got a mobility issue or something walking down the state highway. I don't know. So it's a safety issue. We gotta do something about it. So I got a message from him. He submitted what they requested, but I think some sort of official capacity would, he's kind of taking it on himself. Right now, but it's an issue with growing town, growing communities. We need enough space to park it.
Okay.
Best update there. You've requested that we do the business items next, so we'll move on to business items. Could I have a motion, please, for the approval of the donation of the Boyleston Night Usaks tickets to BES students?
So moved.
Lisa?
Second.
Jess, who's, what's this one here? Cindy?
So Matt Lecombe from Press Technologies has arranged through Al, myself, to donate one ticket per student at BES from Boyleson Night, which is in August, for the Usaks game.
All right. It was actually a great conversation with Matt and Cindy and arranged for that to happen. I actually have an opportunity to know the new president of the Usaks, whose kids went to that really soon. He's going to arrange for us to have some special events taking place there, that mag as well, too. And some of the characters are hopefully going to be attending Boyleson Elementary School. Some of the characters of the Usaks will be there as well, too. So there's a lot of good things going on with that. So we thank Matt for that, but we wanted to make sure it got in front of school committee because there was a price with donating levels to answer.
All right, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. Could I have a motion, please, for the approval of the Tohoto eighth-grade field trip to Kennedy Lake?
So moved.
Megan?
Second.
Lisa? Al?
Lisa, do you want to jump in?
This is a field trip that's been taking place and is often looked forward to. It's essentially a celebration, you know, just prior to eighth grade graduation, so.
And the only reason why I'm bringing it in front of school committee, because it's out of state. So we're going into capture, so I have to make sure school committee approves it. That's, that's the only reason why I bring a field trip, fine.
Right.
Yeah, this has been an ongoing thing. Not the first time it's happened.
That's right. And I think Nicole has a cup. Did you have Mike sign that? Did you bring that with you by any chance, the Kennedy Lake thing?
Perfect.
If we approve it.
If you approve it, yes, absolutely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Okay, that motion passes, too.
Hope it's drier than the Six Flags trip.
Oh, no kidding, right?
Yeah.
So sad.
Okay, so yeah, I guess that brings us completely out of order.
So, so let me publicly apologize to Mike in school base. So a couple of things. I was trying to purposely rearrange the meeting. Tracy was running late, so she was giving us that. She was stuck in traffic. Aaron is on his way to Masco. And as you appreciate the conversation I just had with Cindy trying to get home a little bit, really, because she's sick as could be. So those are why I was sort of manipulating the agenda. So I apologize on that, just to get Aaron and Cindy and Tracy running a little late, so sorry about that. So my section of the first is, I know Matt's not here, so we'll go right to school choice. I have a form for you below. If you could pull that up first, Joe. The attachment you're going to see, it should be, no, you, you don't? No one has a copy of this document?
It came in very late, right?
Oh, I didn't see it. Yeah.
It's in there now.
I texted. I was like, is there something?
Sorry, I apologize right here.
It was in the, yeah, it was just in the drive-in.
Oh, okay. I always get paranoid. I'm missing something.
Yeah, no, no, I apologize. So this, after many conversations with myself and Lisa and John and Cindy, this is school choice recommendations for next year. At the elementary schools, both in Berlin and Boyleson, after consulting.
For you guys, I love that.
We could share if there's one.
I have it on my computer.
Yep.
Oh.
There you go.
Thank you.
After consulting with the principals in Berlin and Boyleson, we are saying that there is no room for school choice students at the elementary level. At the high school, we're being very specific on their grades that we believe, based not with this room, but with the recommendations after lengthy conversations with the admin team, Lisa, Rich, and Renee. So right now, at the different grade levels, we're recommending for school choice. Again, this is school committee conversation. Grade seven, we have four open slots. In grade 10, we have three open. So it would be a total of seven kids, students that would be for open, for school choice, if school committee agrees on that. Just a couple of things that you need to be aware of as well, too, with regards to school choice. When we're looking at the students that are graduating from our class, this year graduating total, Lisa, is?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three. And please appreciate the amount of kids that are coming in. In grade six is 94. So there's a big gap of students that are exiting and students that are coming in. We're also looking at the school choice numbers in relation to what middle school looks like and what high school looks like. When you're looking at that number in grade seven to four, that would round that off to 80 if you guys approve that. We're looking at their grades in middle school and the teams and the four classes per team as well, too. That would put that class size at basically 20 in each one of those. Take a look at the grades eight, they're high numbers there. Grade nine, we're looking at some data in there, and we're concerned with the work and support that we need to be able to give grade nine. So Lisa and I and Rich, Renee, were very thoughtful on these openings in making sure that we can support our own students that are in here and the needs of them, but also if there is room in available for those students as well, too. Again, the number of kids exiting and the number of kids coming in, and just be mindful of that. The other part is, we don't know if kids are going to be moving in, so always careful about that. So I respectfully present to school committee, after much consideration and conversations with admin team at Tohoto, these are our recommendations for school choice for next year. Questions?
I would have a real problem with not adding anyone to grade nine. I under, like, watching the trends of the kids dropping off. And I understand you've said you don't like adding students at the 11, 12 grade. If that class continues to get smaller next year, and then all of a sudden it's at 11, and they're getting smaller and smaller, you're graduating with a class of 50 kids. How fun is that? That's not a high school experience. I would like to see spots added there.
What's the reason for, you said you were looking at some data. How?
So when I looked at the MCAS data, so those are students who are currently in eighth grade. So I was able to share MCAS data, their seventh grade MCAS data from last year of those students. And that is a particularly, there's a lot of gaps in that, in that grade level. And so with smaller class sizes, we're able to target instruction more effectively.
I appreciate you saying that, I really do. We just, we're concerned about that grade level and making sure that we're going to give those students everything they can have.
How does that translate across other districts? Is that a problem across the state with that one grade? Is that MCAS scores? Are they particular, is that, is it post-COVID that they're all that grade as particularly?
I respect, I haven't looked at others, so I've been sort of focusing on ours. I mean, so we're looking at this eighth grade group that's coming in here. And again, is there room? Absolutely. We know that. It's what, what do we want for our students that are in here and focusing on those kids?
This is the class that, two years ago, we were here talking about, their fifth grade schools. Like, 80% of them were not at the minimum literacy, literacy, I think, level. Like, 80% of the class. There was, there's what, four not meeting, partially meeting, meeting, and exceeding, right? And 80% were either partially or not, right? Is that, I think that's the class. That's, that is concerning. And then you're adding, just through elementary to Tohoto, you're adding 30 people to the building. You're graduating 60-something, and you're adding 94. Like, additional 30 people running around the building.
I, I bet you're with, sorry, fewer staff, fewer teachers. We cut positions here. Let's be clear. We cut a science teacher here. We cut a special coordinator position here, right? So you just got to be mindful of that. And I, I just want to focus again. We have 94 students coming into grade six yet. Our focus is to make sure that those students, all of those students, and they, they travel throughout this entire building. Our focus is making sure that they're going to have the highest quality education as well, too. And that this way, we're making sure that they don't leave us, right? Most superintendents, when we get our students coming to preschool and kindergarten, we want to make sure we're working with those families because they're the ones that are going to travel up. We want to make sure these students, 94, probably our largest class, largest class in a long time coming into grade six in Tohoto. We want to make sure, we're going to make sure they're successful.
Is it 94, or is it?
Yes, it is 94. Thirty-one students coming from Berlin and 63 coming from Boyleson.
What's the current, so the class after that?
You don't add in the, you don't add in the current school choice? Because like, all the other columns do that.
If they're already in school choice, they're Berlin, Boyleson.
So I, I don't, I have.
Yeah, so no reason.
I just have that information. So when I, I just go into Power School and identify.
Two from Berlin, one from Boyleson, right?
Yeah, there is two from, right.
That will be in grade six next year.
Yeah, so that's actually 97.
No, she's saying that out of the 31, two of those students in Berlin are school choice students.
That's correct.
Right. It's, because I don't, I don't have my access. My access is six through 12. So I, you know, so I just, that data is.
Forgot it's 94, 97.
Yes, it's 94.
And then is ninth grade current? Because it's like 70 plus 12.
So there are, so we are losing quite a few students. At this point, we have 14 students going to Asavet and St. John's.
Seven to Asavet, five to St. John's, and two private, correct? And we played with, how many different versions of the? And we, we played with, how many different versions of Nicole, Lisa, and I to try to get the best way to present this data to you? So we, we, we have a lot in there, we're not showing what you're looking for. This is my first time presenting school choice numbers to you, and I know how clean or how clear you want them, I'm sorry.
Can you say that, that fourteen makes up how many to Asavet and how many?
Seven confirmed to Asavet, five confirmed to St. John's, two confirmed to private.
Boarding.
And I wanna be careful not to go. What's that?
You just said boarding.
Boarding.
It doesn't necessarily mean they're going to boarding school, it's just private institutions.
Oh, private, right, private institution, but well, like, there's, I, I, I put board because oftentimes the question is why would they go there? Well, it's like, because there are certain situations, like, um, boarding schools offer a different type of education and it, that's very different and unique. So that's something, that makes it a unique experience, something that we could never replicate.
Western Academy.
Right.
The one down right over there.
Full day experience.
Right, right.
You wouldn't have to sleep in there, they're still getting the full day experience.
Right, yeah.
So, so next year, we're doing nothing. We see thirty more students in this building than we see today. Fewer teachers, fewer staff. I know the year after that, the Berlin class, what is the current fourth grade size? What's?
Forty.
So you're gonna have a similar number, eight, high eighties. Um, cause the Berlin class in fourth grade is forty-six or something right now.
Yeah, I did look into that.
So I, I just have to know.
They're all big. After that class in Boylston, that's forty, they're all in Boylston, they're close to sixty, sixty-five.
And then, yeah, and that doesn't count the new apartment buildings that really probably aren't fully incorporated yet. That report we got for the projection, the Nezdek report and projection shows Berlin growth actually larger than Boylston growth last month. And, and to, to add thirty additional kids into the building, younger kids too, not, you know, mature seniors graduating, but younger kids coming in just to get, right, get used in the building for the first time. Um, with fewer staff, with fewer teachers, with a million dollars cut out of the budget for services that we just approved. My philosophy on school choice now is we have enough to focus on with local taxpayers' kids. We just went through huge, but finance committee is upset with people who are making a pit stop in these towns, taking our public education, right? That's the comment that they make. I just can't imagine a lot of support for adding outside, you know, not outside, but just additional students outside of a natural growth that's, we know is, I think over the next five or six years in Berlin, the projection numbers are like forty percent, somewhere like that.
It's a blind lottery, right? So we're, we're gonna put names, so right now we currently have three, six, seven, eight, like ten applications of, of students that have applied. I haven't looked at them, I just know the number we have, right? Because again, it's a blind lottery, you put their names in a hat, I have, have a school committee member with us, I'm not sure if you've done this in the past, he has the opening, if we have openings, he has number one, he has number two, here is that. A little bit more data, again, we put a lot of time into this, Nicole, myself, Lisa, Rich, Renee, um, I know one of the questions in the past was, you know, to help out with school choice, to help out with, um, extra curriculum activities, sports and stuff like that. So we literally went through every school choice student and see if they participate in extra curriculum activities. It's roughly about sixteen percent of students that attend our district from school choice participate in any extra curriculum activity.
Did you say sixteen?
Sixteen, sorry.
One six.
One six. One six. So I'm just giving you all data, first time presenting school choice to you guys, so I wanna make sure you have all that information.
Are we voting on this tonight?
No.
Okay. I don't, I am not prepared to vote on this tonight, I just got this information, haven't had time to look at it, so I.
This is like a first read. No, this is just a first read. And the other thing that I've been asking for for the past couple of years and not to put any other weight on Aaron's shoulders is, um, it would be great to have some type of cost analysis, like what are we actually getting? And like maybe total money, you know, just in a given year, total money we've gotten from school choice people and, you know, estimated expenditures for fee-specific.
Yeah, yeah.
If that's even legal, I don't know, cause I know that, I'm sure.
There, there's, there's the exact dollar for you, we can give you it, five thousand dollars per student, we can talk about that special ed component, we can present that at the next school committee meet, you meet, meeting that we have, but there's sometimes undocumented, or how do you account for expenses as well too? And I'm, I'm just giving you examples.
Yeah, it's a heavy lift. It's really something that he'd have to, you know, ask.
Megan Grill comes into us with school choice, um, and Megan Grill comes right in, but she needs to see Rich multiple times, because I'm, I'm just saying, it's a blind lottery, right? We have no idea how to document that, right? How many times they visit Rich, how many times they visit Renee, how many times they go to the office? All of those things we don't document, right? Again, it's a blind lottery where we choose our kids. I'm just giving you all the data and certainly I'll have, we'll, we'll give you some cost analysis about school choice, and whether it's a special education kid, there's a, there's a misunderstanding about where that money comes from, other districts as well too. We can provide all that information. I think we gave, gave that in the budget presentation, Aaron gave a presentation about refunding on that, but we certainly can give that again to you.
And how many kids are we sending out? How many kids are we losing in school choice? Cause Nishova opened up quite a few seats for this year, and I feel like, I know at least three kids from Berlin that have gone to Nishova that are still waiting for more seats that are going to also be leaving.
So right now we know of, right now, we know of the seven confirmed to Asavet, that's asking a question, I'm sorry.
No, like how many of our students are currently going out of district, are school choicing to Bolton, to Lancaster?
We haven't made aware of them right this point.
Unless they, unless they've started much early on, like unless they have been school choice into another district from very early on, there's really no way of knowing.
Until they capture the money for us.
Like I, I don't know, like there, there is currently, there are currently no sixth through twelfth graders that I know that are school choicing out.
I know several.
Well, well, they must have been school choice out before. Like I, I've not, we've not been got, we've not been given the paperwork.
So how, how, so tell us about that, how are you made aware of those kids?
So they have to, um, they have to unenroll them, they have to unenroll about.
So if they start it for the sixth grade, then they would have gotten the eight or percent from.
The fifth grade, right.
There's, there's also the districts have to talk to each other, right? Cause we, we gotta give them money, right? And so all of that conversation happens.
It exists.
What's happening?
Yeah, that, that information does exist, um, in, in a database of like, of students that are Berlin, Boylston residents that are school choicing at any grade level. So I would imagine that is something, if you're asking Aaron for that kind of data, he would be able to.
So I'm assuming right now we have.
So like before we vote, that, I think it would be good to like give Aaron like an email, I mean, what if he need to get it in a month?
So, yeah, so we will vote on it in June.
Yeah.
And. So what do you, what do you want to know to make a decision? Ask it now.
It would be nice to get some more cost added, Beth makes a good point, like how much money are, what are we paying for school choice out? What are we getting for school choice in? I mean, I'm just saying like some facts that he has that, you know, you know, about, you know, what are some additional costs, if any, you know?
Sure. And along with that, doesn't directly relate to school choice, but the exit interview that we talked about, that we got information on last year, to get new information. Sure. The only thing I might not be able to give you on this is, is what you're asking for that. I don't know when we will be able to, what's that, sorry?
She was talking about asking too.
So we, I mean, we're paying out, we're going to pay out for those seven kids going to Asavet, and then those seven people hypothetically, the four and the three would cancel out those costs.
I, I, the only thing I'm not sure I'll be able to tell you, just going with Janelle's, we know in our district who participates in school choice right now. We can tell you exactly who, we won't tell you the name, but the grades level, we can give you that information. But for next year?
Oh, no, I don't mean for next year, no, it's a year.
Okay, I'm sorry, cause I don't know that.
I stand like in general, like the snapshot right now, how many students are we paying out for them to go to another?
Yeah, we should have.
I think I have that.
No, Aaron would have to go through the accounting system to see what he's actually paying, because I agree with Lisa, like how would you ever know unless they, you guys aren't gonna, you're not gonna report on that, once they're out of district, they're out of district.
Sure, but you're asking two, two questions.
It's a financial thing. Either the, the town might, I know like in Boylston, they'll ask Aaron like for numbers and they deal the money, like just like in Berlin, how vocational comes separate. I don't know if school choice comes separate, like if it comes from the town or if it has to come from the district.
Yeah.
Aaron might tell us differently, but the, I agree with Janelle, the information exists, you're not gonna have it now, he's gonna have to like research it and see whatever, what do we pay?
Yep, so I guess I wanna make sure you understand, play, understanding the financial pieces, I've completely checked out that. Are you looking for numbers per grade?
Just in general. I would like to know how many current students. Residents are being school choicing.
Elsewhere.
To another town.
Can you get that, like?
And like, and I think if we knew what town, that'd be great.
Sure, we have that information.
Like I live in Boylston, I'm not gonna go to Tohato, I'm deciding I want a school choice to Nishova.
More importantly, why? Even if we had that information, it's in.
But we might not, because people might just say.
We might not on that, yeah, right? The Asavets and the St. Johns and stuff, we have that.
Yeah, people that started at Tohato and then they decided what they're gonna send to private high school. I mean, there's always gonna be people that do that in general.
That's right. And, and know what? Any district that's around this community, we're fighting the fight against St. John's and Elswood, right? No matter what, you know, there's alumni, there's that whole field of alumni, right? My, my, my son went to St. John's, my father went to St. John's, some of those things we can't control. But certainly we can find out the cost and, and what grade levels there, there are school choices. So again, just presenting this to you, uh, my first time presenting school choice numbers to you guys, now that I know that you're looking for more specific than numbers per grade from where town and the numbers of the cost analysis.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Good. Okay?
Before we vote.
Anything else?
And we, private schools?
No, only choice.
Yeah.
So, so by the way, just, just for a little, if they go to a private Catholic school, not a private Catholic, a private school, we don't, we don't pay the five thousand dollars, right? Just only if they're going to a public school, do we pay that money out. Okay, so like the St. Johns and things like that.
And if I, if I.
Go ahead, please.
So I, I just wanted to make you aware, um, I believe there's a school choice, um, law on the Massachusetts, Massachusetts general laws, that the school committee will vote before June first of each year to notify the Department of Education whether we're participating. I don't know if we're already on the docket, cause we, we currently have school choice people.
I think you've got a lot of slots after.
So I just, you know, so the slot's after, so I just.
It's whether you're gonna participate in school choice.
That's if we're gonna participate, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we're just, I, I just wanted to make sure that we're, you know, we're.
Yeah, cause there's, yeah, there's two things you can do, you can either choose not to.
Not to participate.
Or you can choose to vote on numbers every year. Each other to vote.
Yeah, okay.
Any other information you're looking for for us in the next meeting?
That's good.
Great, thanks. So the next thing, um, sort of just keeping things, is the facility use forms. So our forms are very old and very outdated, um, and the financial pasta goes along with them as well too. Um, so appreciate Beth catching some of that stuff as well too. So in full disclosure, I didn't recreate a wheel, right? We spent a lot of time and money and effort creating this in Hinton, Wilberham. I sort of just took these forms and created now Berlin, Boylston. But it literally goes through, when you have a hot copy, I'm not asking you to make any decisions tonight, I want you to sort of do a first read, right? We were paying X number of dollars for our custodian, um, paying them, but we're charging lower than what we were paying our custodian. So we're losing money every time we had an event that we had to have a custodian here. It just wasn't working out for us. No one really revisited the, the cost centers that go along with this, no one ever revisited the forms altogether, and, and the liability and the insurance that goes along with this as well too. So again, spent a lot of time, money, and effort years ago creating this, um, better than through attorneys, made sure we're good with it. Um, I'm now presenting this to Berlin, Boylston to just take a look at and update our forms. So every time we're having an event, we're not losing money for custodian use, instead should be making some sort of profit on that as well too. So first look at it, please, thanks, if you catch any mistakes, um, please let us know, but I want you to help.
Just email you.
Yes, please, and Nicole.
We spent some time last year with, uh, Berlin basketball uses the facility. We kicked it off the line about that.
Okay.
Julie Lee spent a lot of time working with Carol.
Okay.
About that.
Okay.
Um, so we don't need to talk about that.
Okay, perfect.
I think some of that might be why prices are lower.
Okay, that's, that's definitely part of it. I think that's changed with Julie not being on that.
Yeah, I have no idea what goes on in Berlin basketball, I just know.
We're losing by far, and, and even in Berlin, I don't think we even have custodians there, right? So at that time.
Well, that was the same.
But events we have here.
That's in the lease.
Yep.
So they don't pay, they weren't paying, she was, Carol was waving the B last year, I think, first. Boylston, I think.
They replaced the, they refinished the floor.
That was easy.
Yeah.
So rec department paid to refinish the floor, right? In Boylston, we have a second facility, we have the hillside, and it's like dirt cheap to use, cause it's a town facility, and there's no custodians there, it's like everybody just does what you're supposed to, and so it's just a different situation, so there was an inequity there, so like Boylston barely uses the school, whereas Berlin rec needs, that's their only facility.
And we're not, we're, we're not just talking about this for the Ochsberg program, we're talking the, the use that this building has alone, right? From outside agencies, so basketball projects.
For sure for this one, yes, this one.
Like, we should have updated forms, like we should not be using forms that were at least ten years old, that, I think, was it ten years old? Yeah, that, that we should.
No, I totally agree. And that, it was all like on the docket for last year, the to-dos, and then it got too complicated with Berlin being different, and then we voted to like revisit it this year, so I'm glad.
And even like points of contact in case of emergencies and stuff like that, we just need to have this information going on.
With the alarm off.
That's right. At two AM. At two AM, that town meeting in the town of Berlin, yeah. Um, anyways, so all of this needs to be covered as well too. And who's, so just off that same line, right? So the town meeting happened in Berlin, everybody sort of left, walked out the door, right? Who's really responsible for that, that overseeing that? I walk out the door, I leave, I see a car still sitting there, it was a town moderator in there. I look through the window and everyone's gone, everyone's gone except for the town moderator in there. I'm trying to get in, my alarm doesn't work after midnight, but who was I calling that was responsible? And luckily enough, the alarms were set off, so the police showed up and we were able to solve that. But like who's responsible at two AM if something happens and boos and shit of those events? Yes, they are, absolutely, so anyways, that's.
I, I just want, for the fee schedule, it has been broken down for middle school auditorium, Tonto auditorium. There's no middle school auditorium, there's the whole middle school section in one of the strike.
Okay.
And then we don't have a tennis court. Right?
No.
Not for that, that's, that's correct. So like there, there's a few things on here that.
So, yeah, I know you caught that one other for me, if you don't mind. We painstakingly went through this, looking at these, but if there's any other areas you check, that's why it's a first read, right? If you see anything, if you can just let us know, first read on that. Great, next budget update, again, I can't thank everyone for your support in this budget process. Um, we're in the process of meeting with our admin and our goal is to bring back all those cuts and reductions that took place that, that March eleventh, right, that, below that bottom line, any of those positions. That includes the grade T, grade two teacher, um, all of those literacy tutors, um, all of that, the band, all of that is going to be bringing brought back. But we have not even had an admin meeting, um, since our, our last meeting last week, so all of that will be in play. Uh, we'll give you more of an update as we draw closer to that. But thanks to the support of school committee and the both towns, we're able to bring back those cuts and reductions that took place after that March eleventh day. So we will continue to keep you updated on that. Um, next one, um, mine is, is the Boston Elementary School principal update. I wanna thank everyone for this process, I mean, parents, teachers, parents, school committee members, Brianna Vasquart. I mean, incredible work that they have done, long, long process to get there. Um, I know that Jessica and Megan were on that last round of, from the very beginning on that rounds of interviews. Um, at this point, we have narrowed the interview, I shouldn't say, has narrowed it down to three finalists. Um, they are Ian Duke, who currently is an acting principal of Hudson Public Schools, Cheryl Cardero, who's an assistant principal of Placentio Elementary School in Halston, Mass, and Robert Pelzarski, who is a current sitting principal in Oxford Public Schools. On Wednesday, tomorrow, um, May fourteenth, they will meet the admin team at central office, um, followed after a week for, for a period of time, and then they're gonna head over to Boston Elementary School where Cindy and Brianna will give them a walk through the building as well too. So we literally have a rotation, they'll come in, be with us, head over to Boston and we'll rotate them through, all three. Um, we have created a, a Google Doc that principal, admin will give feedback on the three. Um, the goal is for next week, they have a meet and greet with our parents at Boston, same type of thing, all three will go there. Created a Google Doc that parents will then give feedback on those three, um, three principals. Our goal is hopefully by the end of next week, um, to be able to, um, have office someone in contract, so we can start that process as well too. I will keep you updated, yes?
Who was on our person?
Sure, Robert Pelzarski, he is currently a sitting principal in Oxford Public Schools.
Oxford?
Oxford.
Oxford.
Ian Duke, Cheryl Cardero and Robert Pelzarski.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll continue to keep you updated. Um, next staff appreciation day, uh, thank you to all our staff and parents, you know? I talked to Cindy, talked to John, talked to Lisa, the events that these parents took for these teachers and parents were outstanding. Um, also thank you to the admin team and school committee members, uh, for the ice cream truck that, um, visited all our schools on Monday, May, uh, May twelfth. I know all of our, um, our admin, our teachers, our parents, our nurses, everyone appreciated that. And that's all on behalf of our admin team and school committee, so thank you for that. Um, it was, it was a great, nice little treat on a nice day to have ice cream for all of our, our staff in Berlin-Bolsten. Um, lastly, graduation scheduled for June first at two o'clock. Um, again, that's the, the matriculation, right? Every, all the work that we're doing here every single day, um, every, all the work that our pre-K, all the way up to grade twelve, the work we're doing. And the final thing is when those students walk across the stage and accept their deplomis and going after, uh, either college or university or vocational audio services, uh, it's a, it's a great moment for us all, I invite you all to come. Um, Lisa and I are working on that process, I know that her team is doing incredible work getting it ready for that day. Um, myself, along with Mike, the, the chairperson of school committee, will be up on stage one with admin, um, shaking cans as the students walk across the stage as well too. So we, we hope that school committee members can also attend that event, which we're really looking forward to our students as well too. And I think that's, again, I apologize for don't have a lot on, I was really trying to be helpful to Aaron and Cindy and stuff like that, so I'm sorry about that. Questions, I gave you a lot in the shop here, that. And I apologize for the school choice numbers getting delayed yet, we sort of were floating curve ball last night, our earliest wanting with this whole technology piece. I would have had that in the hands a lot earlier than, as late as it got to you guys. Do better. One AM, one AM, he texts me, I'm like, who is texting me at one AM, sure enough, who's going up?
Uh, I think we covered everything on the agenda, did I miss anything? We, we went quite a bit out of order.
I'm so sorry, that's.
No, but just make sure we got everything, I think we did, so the only thing we have left is the executive session. Uh, so executive session one will not return to open session. Could I have a motion, please enter executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A, purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, BBDA, CBA. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair, so do others.
So.
Lisa.
Thanks.
Beth, thank you, uh, all, any questions about that?
Welcome.
Yep. Jess.
Aye.
Megan.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
As well, so we will now return back to the session, we won't be returning until the session, thank you. Lisa, Cindy, Janelle, thank you very much, appreciate it very, very much, everybody. Feel better? Feel better?